Good evening, everyone. I don't know if you can hear me.
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much. So I've got six on one. I'd like to welcome everybody to the joint meeting of the Katari City Council and the Successory Agency to the former Katari Community Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, November ninth, 2021. Ms. Burgess, if you would give us a roll call, please.
Councilmember Harvey. Councilmember Sparks.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Vice Mayor Landman.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here. Thank you very much. Mr. Obed, if you would kindly introduce our staff tonight?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So we have Noah House, Community Development Director here tonight. We have Mike Parish, our police chief. We have Angela Quarter, our Director of Mission Services. We have Craig Scott, our Public Works Director. And then we have, of course, Jan Barker, our city attorney, and last but definitely not least, Lauren Burgess, the city clerk.
Thank you so much. Now, if you would all kindly join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic
Public, for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So I would be looking for a motion on the approval of the minutes for October twenty-sixth, 2021.
Does Councilmember Ford move to approve?
Second?
So we have a motion and a second. Ms. Burgess, would you kindly give us another roll call?
Councilmember Harvey. Councilmember Harvey, can you hear us?
We can't hear you, Susan.
Shall we give her a moment to try to re-log in?
Sure. Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes, thank you. It looks like you're in, Councilmember Harvey, but I don't know if you can hear us. Okay, maybe she's logging out, logging back in. So I will go ahead and move on to announcements at this point. We'll show a four zero, partially abstained in the minutes. Okay. Meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted City Council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the City Council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comment relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they want, wish. The City Council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the City Council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the City Council's or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposefully biased. Measure S supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at katari-city.org. Citizens interested in receiving City of Katari community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up with Nixle by downloading mobile app from the iOS or Android App Store, or by texting your local zip code nine four nine three one two eight 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 seven seven seven. Like always, we'd love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at seven oh seven seven nine two four six hundred or info@katari-city.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at seven oh seven seven nine two four six one one. And of course, if you have an emergency, please contact nine one one. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, Nixle, and Nextdoor. So has Councilmember Harvey rejoined?
Yes, I am back. I don't know what was wrong. It was like really weird and it was all garbly, so I tried again and got back in. The wonders of technology.
I'm just glad it wasn't like last night where we lost a lot of internet around the whole area with the rain.
Good point. Thank you.
Certainly. So now we'll move on to presentations, and we have currently a presentation on access Sonoma and IMDT.
Yes, I think you may remember the council for a while. Lauren loaded up the presentation. Do you have Tina Rivera, the interim director from the Department of Health Services in county, and her team here, you see on the slide. So, yeah, you I don't see on the screen right now, but I believe you're on. Want to go ahead and get started?
Thank you. Hi, Tina Rivera here, interim director for the Department of Health Services with Sonoma County, and thank you so much for having us here. I have here with me staff members, Joe Hedigus. He's our interdepartmental multidisciplinary team full, I know, a mouthful. He's our manager for the IMDT team. And then also Will Gajowski, he's our HART team manager. That's homeless encampment and resource team manager. And we're here to present our Access Sonoma Initiative, which is accessing coordinated coordinated care and empowering self-sufficiency. And then we're here to share with you about our IMDT and HART teams. And then to answer any questions or concerns you might have. Next slide, please. So what we're going to cover tonight is what is Access Sonoma County IMDT HART and what do we do? How does the IMDT and HART conduct outreach and case management within Sonoma County? And then what are some of the major IMDT and HART successes? And so with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Joe Hedigus, who will begin the rest of our presentation. Joe?
Thank you, Director Rivera, and thank you to the council and mayor for having us here to share this presentation with you this evening. As Tina mentioned, I'll dive into some of the kind of broader strokes and information around the IMDT. If we can go ahead and progress to the next slide. So what is Access Sonoma and the IMDT? I'll go over kind of three basic parts or pieces of what is Access Sonoma. We have what's called the Safety Net Collaborative, and I'll talk about what that is in just a moment and how that came about. Then we have what's called our Access Sonoma Partners. These are all of the organizations that we work with and partner with here at the county and then throughout the cities in Sonoma County. And we'll show you a list of all of those organizations and partners and detail what we do. And then finally, I'll talk about what is the IMDT. Again, it stands for the Interdepartmental Multidisciplinary Team. And again, it's a mouthful, but as the name implies, we're really bringing together the various county departments and services across the community through various different cohorts or teams that we operate. And we'll describe those teams and what we do in as we go through the presentation here. So with that, we can go into the next slide about the Safety Net Collaborative. So Tina had mentioned Access Sonoma stands for accessing coordinated care and empowering self-sufficiency. And this really sprang forth in mid 2017 when the county board of supervisors saw the need and prioritized strengthening the county safety net system, establishing a goal to identify the most vulnerable residents and developing coordinated strategies to improve well-being, self-sufficiency, and recovery. To accomplish that, the board recognized a need for organization, technology, tools, and other resources to help us deliver these services to folks in our community. So that's how the access initiative came about. There's a web link there you can go to and visit and just get a little more of that context and history if you're interested. But again, the initiative sprang forth from that board discussion and conversation in mid 2017. Next slide, please. So the Safety Net Collaborative, again, came from that board conversation. Essentially, the collaborative consists of leadership representatives from across the county departments. So as you'll see in the slide here, there's representation from health services, human services, Community Development Commission, the Justice Arm, so probation, public defenders, offices, et cetera, child support services. All of the department heads and directors from these departments come together, meet regularly, inform this Safety Net Collaborative. They address everything from policy development, discharge planning, encampment policies, funding decisions, staffing decisions, budgets, and the like. So they're really kind of the overarching planning body behind the IMDT. Next slide. So with that overarching body, we then, Safety Net Collaborative moved us towards developing the IMDT, and that's how folks access care. So next slide, and we'll jump into what the IMDT is. Thank you. So again, the IMDT, Interdepartmental Multidisciplinary Team, is meant to overcome issues of having kind of program silos and different disparate efforts amongst different county departments, community providers, and really is working to bring together those groups to share information and work collectively to help support folks experiencing homelessness. The IMDT consists of frontline staff covering a broad range of skill sets and experiences from, you know, licensed clinicians, social workers, adult protective service workers, probation officers, housing specialists, healthcare workers, a whole range of folks that come together, meet weekly, and provide kind of wraparound case management and planning support for clients of the IMDT. Currently, there are four teams or cohorts of the IMDT. One is focused on COVID-vulnerable individuals, so folks who are sixty-five and older or have medical conditions that make them more vulnerable. The whole person care cohort, which is the easiest way to describe it is kind of to help folks ask, get connected to county mental health services. They really support folks experiencing homelessness, do the mental health assessments, and get connected to county mental health services. There's the Mental Health Diversion Team, as the name implies. They work with the courts to divert folks from jail who may have mental health needs that contributed to their criminal convictions. And then the HART team, which is the one we'll probably spend the most time on this evening, again, stands for the Homeless Encampment Assistance Resource Team, and that's Will's group, and they go out into all of our encampments and really work to support folks in those encampments. Next slide, please. Here's a list of all of our partners. On the left-hand side, again, you can see the very, some of the county departments, this is not totally comprehensive of all the different programs and groups that are involved, but it really gives a good snapshot. And then on the right-hand side, you know, a whole host, an array of community nonprofit healthcare and other service providers. Again, all of these groups come around a table weekly, a virtual table now, but we meet every week and discuss hundred fifty, two hundred-plus clients that we share and really strategize on case management and coordination and services and really helping them move forward in their plans there. Next slide. So what do we, what do we do? What does IMDT do? Our goals are to help clients progress towards self-sufficiency. We connect them to behavioral health services, employment and income security, suitable and stable housing, food resources, physical health disability management, so applying for disability income, connecting to rehabilitation services, substance use treatment and harm reduction services. We aim to reduce recidivism in all of these types of programs and really help folks adopt and adapt pro-social and communal behaviors that will help them move forward. Really, as the quote at the bottom tries to describe, we really try and provide a no-wrong door for services. If folks come to us, we will try and connect them. If we can't, you know, provide the right resources, we will connect them to the folks that do and really try and provide that resource to support folks. Next slide, please. So how do we do our work? Again, we bring together all these different groups. We collaborate to provide care to our shared clients. We understand what services are being accessed across the county departments, and we have a good pulse of what those services are so that we can quickly connect people to them and streamline that access. We collaborate on creating effective, efficient care plans for our folks. We work together with our clients with a client-centered approach to try and get their involvement and buy in into what we're working on. And as you can see from this graphic, it's really all hands-on. And as you can see from this graphic, it's really all hands on deck approach. The client's in the middle. And what's implied by that golden record is we have our Watson database that we use. It really brings in all these different county departments and data and really helps us inform that care plan and support plan for our clients. And as you can see, it really provides a kind of comprehensive wraparound and support. Next slide, please. So this is where I'll pass on to Will, and he can describe the HART team, the encampment team, and the work specifically that they do in the field.
Thanks, Joe, and thanks everyone for having us tonight. Appreciate the invitation. So one of the great things about the IMDT is the structure and these relationships with privacy and information sharing and all these different partners we can have with permission at the table to collaborate is that the county can prioritize and create, you know, any team to meet the needs of Sonoma County. In this particular case, or my team's case, the Joe Roderda Trail was quite a big deal in a major community health risk and emergency of humanitarian proportions. And that's essentially what resulted in my team being created to meet the needs of over 100 individuals and each of their own interpersonal complexities and get them housing and safer health outcomes for the community. My team in particular, we serve the county wide, whether it's a single person, an encampment of 50, an encampment of 15, whether it's the city's jurisdiction to clear it, the county's jurisdiction to clear it, a business or private citizen with appropriate permission, of course. We will reach you and help you. We do have and will share later on the best ways to contact us in a later slide via our website and our email, our phone number, that's all public face can be shared with anyone. Sort of the territory for my team, in addition to encampment work across the whole county and homeless outreach, is case management for all the individuals at Los Gillicos Village, who initially, the majority of them came out of the Joe Roderda Trail to start. However, one of the top sources of referrals as a priority is, as it was created to serve that original larger encampment, we do prioritize serving individuals from encampments across the county to the village. It's one of the first sources of referrals for that shelter. We also have county owned and leased properties that we refer people to via Los Gillicos only, and I'll talk about that a little bit more on another slide. Next slide, please. So how do we do outreach? Well, we'll follow up with any referral we get. The best way to refer is with the website and the email. The reason for that is it gets a group of all of our managers, it gets our admin, and it gets a couple lead staff. So that way, something doesn't slip through the cracks, we can assess the request, and we can delegate it to which IMDT cohort or staff it's best served with. So whether a private citizen encounters someone, refers to the website, contacts me personally, could be a report from the sheriff's office, citizen writes the board, board sends a request or boards aid to us directly, all kinds of different ways, it gets to us and then we assess the situation and follow up and determine a response. That can be, our team, we do a monthly signup for encampment deployments. We do a month at a time. Typically, we'll do two to three, sometimes more assignments a week. We usually deploy in teams of two for safety, but can scale up based on the size of the encampment. We try to be strategic about it. So in terms of where is the greatest risk and where's the greatest need? We can't, we can't serve the whole county, but we'll go where partnerships are needed. So for instance, Old Stony Point Road, there's a large encampment, about 50 people, give or take. And we're going to partner with the host team and do some work there, whether or not, whether or not it's our jurisdiction. So we're gonna, we're gonna navigate, we're gonna partner in those ways, you know. Partnered with Roner Park for their park and ride previously, we'll talk about that one a little bit later. Once they are sort of in county jurisdiction, it changes things a little bit. We have some certain legal processes we have to follow. We have to support all the rights and noticing of the residents there. We have to store their property. And we have to give them viable placements, which is challenging because a lot of people have specific accommodations. The homeless population is really aging, and assuming a lot of us have noticed. A lot of vulnerable people out there that are 60 plus with mobility issues, health issues. So accommodating everyone in a world of finite resources gets to be really challenging at times. When we're out there outreach with the group, we're going to talk about our programs, we're going to give resources like PPE for COVID. We're going to give non perishable food supplies, blankets to keep warm, connect to resources and referrals, whether or not they want anything to do with us and our comprehensive wraparound services. We're going to try and meet their needs in the moment with some quick referrals or resources, whatever they need. Of course, we'll educate as to COVID-19 and take appropriate precautions. And wherever possible with outreach, we partner up with community partners. So I'll kind of walk through, you know, an example. Let's, we're, we're doing some work out in Guernville today at a couple encampments, one on the river and one kind of downtown. So our partner that we work with that works out in that area, or our main one is Reach, or sorry, West County Community Services. So typically, what we'll do if we're going out there, we'll reach out to some of their staff and management, give them a heads up, hey, we're going out here. Or if they are, they can give it our way and let's, let's coordinate, share information in a way that doesn't duplicate to meet the needs of the individuals that are out there and reach the greatest amount that we can that need support. Next slide, please. So let's walk through, let's walk through a hypothetical case, and then we'll get into case management. We go out to River in Guernville, and we encounter a lady, she's 62. She's got a bum knee, she's cold, it's raining, she's going to get flooded out. So what do we do? Well, we go on a team of two, two of our staff, could be an AOD person, alcohol and drug, could be a mental health person, could be a client support specialist. Take one of Reach for, or West County in this case, this example's staff with us, and assess the person's needs, talk about our program, get them some resources, some food, see if they need anything to get ready to leave the site, you know, maybe they need a backpack or a tent, maybe need some gas in their car. We have some flexible funds to meet some of those needs. We talked to them, they signed consent to participate in our team, all of a sudden, we, you know, hey, they're interested in Los Gillicos Village. Great, well, what are the next steps? In that case, we're going to reach out to our partners at the probation department, and they're going to run a quick background check. The reason we do this is not to discriminate, however, there are certain requirements, being near children, fire hazards, we have some hard noes that we can't be flexible about that are requirements. We try to be as inclusive as we can. In this case, with this hypothetical person, their background passes. So what do we do? We coordinate with our partners to take appropriate COVID precautions. We get them up to the alternate care site, test, put them in a hotel with a TV where they can isolate, get some food, get a clean shower, test negative for COVID. And then we're going to get them onto Los Gillicos Village. In the process thereof, they're going to be assigned a caseworker, introduced to the caseworker. And then that's going to start the case management piece as well. So we will move on to the next slide, please, to talk about the village a little more and some of the case management that is there. So, you know, what do we have at the village? Well, we have partnerships with Santa Rosa Community Health. We have a nurse that comes out there regularly, a nurse practitioner that comes out regularly to meet medical needs where people are at. A big challenge for the homeless community can be access to care. We're going to have our caseworkers onsite every day for at least a period of the day to address alcohol and drug, mental health, any of those comprehensive needs that kind of Joe showed up there. Got someone with a warrant, we're going to reach out to our partners at the public defenders to see if we can keep them out of jail. You know, if we got someone that's advocating, maybe they're struggling a little bit, maybe they're relapsing, we could refer them to treatment, or we could put them in jail to the tune of $180 a day. And what's in the best interest of the community financially is usually in the best interest compassionately as well. And when those align, everybody wins. Right at the village, there's about capacity to house about 60 people at any given time. Usually, we keep a couple units available to meet immediate needs for really vulnerable people, like our poor 62 year old lady with her bum knee. We want to be able to serve her in the moment if she's at an encampment, and we need to have some flexible operational capacity there. So we keep that going. But the other piece at the village, if people have that, that comprehensive case management to meet all their needs via transportation to an appointment, a referral to a substance abuse program. But the big aim of it ultimately is to get people from temporary housing to permanent housing. And I will say, we'll share an example of one individual later, but you know, we just had an individual there that had been homeless for 20 years at the village since it was opening, has some disabilities, and when the manager from St. Vincent sends me a picture of her with a key in hand, happy at their apartment or something, that's what it's all about at the end of the day. And so whether it's a year, two years, three months, it provides that launching base where we can give people the personalized plan and goals they want. And ideally, but not always, permanent housing is a part of the picture. Next slide, please. So these are our metrics as of a couple months ago. You'll notice that I think the kind of rate for these type of shelters to permanent housing is usually around 10%. Our exits to permanent housing via the village usually fluctuates between 30 and 35%. At this particular point in time, 34% of exits of the total residents went to permanent housing. And some of those houses are, and I'll go to next slide, please. Some of them are to the county owned and leased housing. Right now, we have about 13 people housed at three different locations. The way they get it, so this housing is specifically through Los Gillicos, and the way we keep it fair and with housing laws is everyone is subject to the same standardized risk metric. We get them in coordinated entry, they do their VI score, which assesses their risk, and then we pull from the most vulnerable at the top. So if you're at the top and there's an opening, we'll discuss the housing opportunity with you, the need for a means to pay like a voucher. At our housing programs, we have a partnership with Buckaloo that's going to teach them curriculum from a trauma informed lens, they're going to teach them some living skills and really support them in that permanent supportive housing environment. Now, anyone that's in any of our houses with a voucher, you know, they have a right to stay there, it's their forever home. Of course, we hope that people, once they have their needs met at permanent supportive housing and they're ready that they move on to their own housing in a place that meets their personal needs, but we're not going to force or require, expect anyone to do that, although we will encourage it. Next slide, please. So we also have 15 contracted substance use treatment beds for residential treatment that our AOD providers use. These treatment beds are accessible to all of our IMDT cohorts and partners. We get referrals from the jail, we get referrals coming directly from hospitals, we get referrals from community partners, we get self referrals, someone's in treatment, I'm homeless, I'm only eligible for 30 days, that's not enough for me, I'm not going to meet my needs. We check in with a turning point, for instance, counselor, they say, hey, this guy's trying really hard. They talk to our AOD person, we assess them, they want the program? Yeah, let's just roll them right in from the treatment site, we'll take them, let's do it. And then we're going to try to find them a placement that's permanent after they leave treatment. Because the last thing we want to do is invest in someone's sobriety and then send them right back to the streets, whether it's a referral to an SLE they can afford or, you know, in the past, NCS sites when we were taking referrals, they're really looking for some creative solutions to get people safe and sober housing as well. And a lot of our treatment programs like have some opportunity, or at least turning point to work on some employment while you're there, so to really have that full continuum of transitioning back into the community successfully. Our success rate right now is about 50%, it's been as high as 65%. But coming directly from the streets and jail to completing a 90 day or 45 day or up on the upper end, six months, nine months treatment, that's a lot to ask for anyone. Next slide, please. So just using this sort of like fiscal year as a guideline, it kind of goes through the cycle, right? So we have initially, we're going to do some outreach. We're going to see what services people want, tell them what we have to offer. They may go to a congregate shelter, like in the picture directly, they may go into a non congregate shelter, but we're going to offer them a menu of options. And then ideally, we're getting people in coordinated entry, getting them different vouchers, or voucher lotto's, wait lists, and really getting them to that permanent supportive housing. Because a lot of our people are going to need just that extra bit of support. And once we get people in housing, which are navigators that help negotiate relationships with landlords and help sell the program and the stable income and the client and get past prior evictions and legal issues, getting people in the door is a huge part of the battle. But one of the most important things is once we get people inside, we need to keep them inside. And that's why we're committed to everyone we place. We're going to support them for a minimum of six months from our team after they're in permanent housing. And more on a case by case basis. There's some people that might need that support, you know, kind of long term, or some people that they get it and they're going pretty quick and, you know, hey, I'm at my job, I'm working 40 hours, I'm doing well, don't need to talk this week. All right, well, we'll talk to you in a couple weeks. Next slide, please. So these are just some of our aggregate totals for our cohorts, and these are a bit of, bit out of date as well, but this includes all of our cohorts. We've probably had at least another thousand or so outreach engagements since, but this is how many people we've contacted, how many people we've sheltered or gotten to permanent housing across our cohorts, and how many have been enrolled in integrated and intensive case management work with us. Next slide, please. So here's an example of one of our successes in terms of a collaborative partnership where a site was cleared and a lot of individuals were placed in shelter and housing. Now, of course, I will add that there are occasionally some challenges in retaining people in those environments, and some of that can be due to needing more low barrier options. But the model, but the model works. In this particular case, we had regular meetings with the city, with the host team, our partner out there, the volunteer organization UFO. And we talked strategy a couple times every week, and we had all of us out there. We shared, we developed, our release of information allows us to add a couple extra partners. So in this case, we took a subset of Roner Park, the homeless task force there, so that we could communicate with the city. We added them to our consent forms, we added UFO as a new partner. And we talked about all these cases and prioritized, okay, how can we meet everyone's individual ADA needs to get them a suitable placement? And some of the work that was done here was, you know what, it takes time for people to move at the, at the last minute. You get this two week notice, you gotta pack everything up and you gotta go. Sometimes we gotta put someone in a hotel for a couple days. Sometimes people aren't ready. So even some of those individuals that they weren't ready when enforcement happened and law enforcement cleared everything out, we sent an offer of at least two weeks after for people that are just kind of not ready, trying to get stuff to storage, you know what? And I say two weeks to get people moving, right? If someone calls me in 16 days and they're all worried they're not going to have a placement, I'm still going to place them. It's just, it's just to create a deadline to get people moving. We had a really high rate of acceptance for services. I think at this site, there was around 40 or so people, over 50% of them took one or more services. Now, that could just be something just from a, hey, give me information, a referral to a doctor at the clinic or a ride here or gas for their car. But really, I'd say about a couple of those and the nine that got into permanent, maybe about half that accepted the ongoing intensive case management. So about 50%, 60% in services, 25, 30% getting ongoing case management. So what really worked for here was that we had a menu of diverse non congregate options to offer people and really good partnership with everyone and appropriate information sharing made this successful. And I'll include a little bit of the before and after of this site. Next slide, please. Just a couple pictures. This is the tail end of the side of it, actually, you can't see the site itself, but it was another 10 or 15 tents as well, and a whole bunch of other cars and items on the site. Now, if we flip through the other after picture, next slide. This was full of tents and everything because it was just like a stray garbage bag. That's the finished product cleared and fenced up with everyone having been successfully relocated. Next slide, please. This is Frank. It's actually, he is one of our success stories, and this is him checking out his new place with his key, his apartment, looking pretty happy. Next slide, please, tell you a little bit about Frank, he was happy to share his story. He was homeless off and on for more than a year, was in and out of the shelter system, staying at the motel, get some help from Catholic charities. And he'd been doing good, he progressed to a shared housing arrangement. But as you can imagine, it's tough enough living with roommates in your early twenties in college or wherever you're at, and it sure probably isn't as much fun after 50 or 60. At a certain point, we want our own autonomy, we want our own space. But sometimes we get into a help me, help you situation. I gotta, if I'm a guy with a voucher and I have no means to pay utility, what landlord's going to give it to me, right? So we gotta help people out to the next step. In this case, Frank got connected with a part time job. And now he's got his own wonder one-bedroom apartment, and he's been very grateful for support from our navigators and their hard work to to get them in housing and for our caseworkers to make it happen and and offer support after he got there. And I think we're close to the end. Next slide. There's our links that I talked about, including our website that's public. It's on the county that can go to anyone and they can reach us anytime. Of course, we're not responding 24 hours a day, but we will get to them and review them as soon as we can. Some of the data studies with Cal Berkeley report and as well as some of the reward awards and recognition the project has received over the years. Next slide, I think that's just questions coming up next, if I'm not mistaken. Oh, there's the actual contact link, sorry. The phone and the email. And questions.
Hey, and we'll turn it back over to you, Damian.
Tina, I want to thank you very much, Joe, and Will. Thank you all very much for the work that you do. It's such an important component for our county and the residents here. I will open it up for questions from our council if they have any questions for you. Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. I really appreciate it. I was wondering if you could give us the information if if you have helped clients in Katati or if you if the heart team has been out in Katati doing any work in the last year or two.
And Will, I believe you probably have those that information. Will or Jill?
Yeah, I'll jump in here. Sure. I there's not been any encampment, you know, kind of structured encampment outreach in Katati. I think it's been more kind of one-on-one request for services type of thing. But again, I the the heart team specifically is mainly focusing on encampment work. So I'm thinking if anything, it's probably been some of our other teams that, like I said, have gone out and done one-on-one engagements with folks who may have either contacted us or were referred to us through some other mechanism. If I'm recalling correctly, Will, is that right?
Yeah, we have. We haven't. We haven't in in, to my knowledge, in the last year or so, done any any formal encampment work in in the time that I've been leading in Katati. Now, one-offs, requests, referrals, we get those from everywhere, but in terms of a larger encampment, we haven't worked one. But if there's one on your radar, please send it our way. We'll be happy to come by and take a peek.
I I wasn't referring, sorry to be unclear. I wasn't referring to encampment work specifically. I just I the the phone number and the the contact information that you went through, is that for the heart team that focuses on encampment work? Or is that, yeah, so that's the number we should be calling if we have individual referrals or things like that?
Exactly. Yeah, it's meant to be kind of a catch-all, contact us, and then that contact will go to a series of managers who will then kind of parse it out to who's the best team to follow up. So, yeah, it's kind of an open.
So you you said earlier that or someone said earlier that the best way to contact was through the website to make sure that nothing got missed. Is that is that better than calling or emailing? We should just go through the website?
I think he meant you can access the contact us information via the website. So you can email via the website. There's a link to click there if you want to email via that, or you can. Yeah, either way is fine.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, sure.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes, thank you for the presentation, all the information, and I'm glad to see that there that you're having successes. Do you have any statistics on long-term success rates? I mean, some of these are short, but are you seeing people then kind of fall back into the same situations or do you have really good success in them not falling back? What can you talk about that a little bit?
And do you mean specifically with respect to homelessness or treatment? Mental health, because our teams deal with all.
Okay.
Deal with homelessness, the mental health, the diversion piece or treatment. So, you know, there could be tracking on any number of those. Now, with with respect to homelessness, we we have our access database, our Watson Care Manager System. So we've recently started tracking with our partners with respect to homelessness and and how we're case managing. And then specifically how we're tracking long-term for for that particular population. So we do have some metrics around our homeless population. Perhaps not as long as we've been tracking, for instance, our mental health or our treatment clients, but we have started tracking our homeless population that way.
So eventually you'll have statistics on all the different cohorts on really long-term how how successful this is. It's wonderful that that, you know, we're we're helping people in the short term, but you know, I like that you're following them for longer periods of time because I think that sometimes, as was pointed out, I think it was Will, you know, people do have setbacks and they sometimes need that extra support to keep them moving forward in the proper direction. So thank you for all that you guys are doing.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford.
Thank you. I want to add my thanks for the presentation and more importantly, for all the work you're doing. This, we just started our SAFE program in conjunction with Runard Park of of teams to, you know, non-police teams to respond to certain people in crisis when calls come in. And it it feels to me like some of those people might, like that might IMDT might be a next step for connecting with services. Have you had conversations with the Pedalmore People's Services and the SAFE teams in Pedalmore, Katati, Runard Park about that handoff?
Absolutely. And that's one of the things that Bill Carter, who's our Behavioral Health Division Director, who's working closely with the SAFE teams and the in-response teams, our mobile support teams, we're helping to coordinate that work and then also helping to coordinate the metrics around those teams as we, you know, utilize the Measure O funds. So we're looking at the the nexus between our IMDT teams and and that, you know, warm handoff, if you will, with respect to case management. Because we absolutely do see with respect to how that's going to flow and work. We know that our IMDT cohorts, for instance, will be case managing some of these individuals, if not already, as individuals go out to respond to, you know, calls. So there will be ongoing conversations as we look to how these, how the process will work. So absolutely, IMDT will be involved in in those conversations going forward.
Okay, thanks so much.
Just real, real quick to add, we do, while while we aren't per se a crisis mental health response team, like mobile support team or, you know, but we do have the capacity to respond when needed on a case-by-case basis in that way. We have several licensed or registered mental health professionals, myself included, that receive 51, 50 training and certification. And so we're happy to assist our partners with that whenever possible. We just, you know, can't be the go-to versus like, say, a mobile support team.
Thank you. I have a question. I don't see any other questions from the council members at the moment. How does this particular program match up with the continuum of care? Or are they in partnership with that or do they work separately from that? Mr. Rivera, would you be?
The Continuum of Care Board?
Correct.
Our Continuum of Care Board is, you know, oversees the the particular funding, if you will, with respect to the Continuum of Care Services and Supports that are specific to, I think it's approximately roughly $4 million of of services and supports for those unincorporated areas. But our IMDT and heart cohorts, if you will, are under the purview of the county. We do work in collaboration, if you will, with some of those partners that are supported by the Continuum of Care. And some of the work that we're doing now is we've been coming together with the continuum of some of the Continuum of Care Board members. As a matter of fact, we have formed a committee, if you will, with some of the Continuum of Care Board members to kind of take a look at some best practices. For instance, some of the best practices for how we respond to encampments. So are we collectively as cities and county? What are the best practices as we're going forward and and taking a look at clearing and noticing and enforcement? Are we all on the same page? So we've been kind of looking at how we can best serve our the entirety of Sonoma County, but do it together and collectively. And then we've also been looking at some other projects. For instance, the board put forward $2 million. So we, as the county and some of the cities, are coming together to look at other options, whether it be services and supports and how we can come together as the IMDT cohort or the teams, how we can broaden that team and include the city's staff and perhaps look at a project, if you will, Project Home Key Cohort, or what other kind of cohorts might make sense for us to come together and collaborate with the Continuum of Care Board. So we're just kind of looking at how we can better collaborate and partner with one another and kind of integrate our services better, shared data. So those are some of the things that we've been looking at doing together.
So within the Continuum of Care and in the IMDT, there may be some redundancies on the types of services that are offered, but not necessarily to the same clientele?
Well, not necessarily. I wouldn't say redundancy of services. For instance, you have the host team, which is an outreach team. Now, our heart and IMDT teams, they do do some outreach, but most of our work is case management. A portion of our work is outreach. But our teams are, the skill set of our teams are are made up of clinicians or social workers. So whereas the city teams, they're the level of the classification levels are more outreach workers or referral workers. So we're looking at, for instance, combining or broadening a team to where we would have a a a broad a team with all of those disciplines. So it's not necessarily that we're duplicating efforts. It's that the city's teams perhaps don't have the skill set that the county team would have. And so we're looking at how can we integrate our teams so that we would have a team that would encompass the entirety of the skill set so that we are getting more bang for our buck, so to speak.
And the reason I and the reason I bring that up is because recently, through the Mayors and Council Members Association of Santa Rosa, we've been working with an ad hoc on the Continuum of Care and looking at how we deliver these services in the most efficient and effective manner, incorporating all of these different cohorts and providers, if you will. And so I think that if you look at the programs that you do and the things that are done under the Continuum of Care, ideally, we'll get to a point where everybody's all on the same page and it is, as you referenced, the best practices.
Correct.
What is the annual budget for this particular program?
Oh, wow. I don't know that off the top of my head. Will, I don't know if you or Joe know the annual budget of our IMDT.
I was gonna say, not of the all the different cohorts. I can speak to the the COVID cohort and the, I'm sure Will can speak to the heart cohort, but the COVID teams grant, oh, geez, drawing a blank off the top of my head what that amount was, but I'll pull it up really quick.
It was just under a million.
A million, yeah, something like that for a year. So and that's, you know, several staff positions.
And we're supported by grant funding, things of that nature.
Thank you so much. And I know that's a tough question to throw at you.
Yeah, I didn't have the dollars to.
You look at all the money that is being available for these programs and then hopefully some more money coming in from the feds and the state, et cetera. And again, my goal is to see these things, just utilize the best practices as they can. And I know that you guys are doing a tremendous job with what you do. So I really appreciate that. It looks like Councilmember Sparks had another question.
Oh, thank you so much. Yes, Tina, I really appreciated what you said about working together with cities and and all working collaboratively. When you mentioned about, you know, sometimes the city teams might not have the expertise. We are such a small city and we have such a small budget that we don't have a team. So our team doesn't have the expertise by by definition. So I had a question, just because I'm new to this. I'm trying to understand how it all fits together. There were several times in the presentation that we mentioned, it was mentioned, you know, when we're in county jurisdiction versus city jurisdiction and things like that. So my question is, if we have somebody who's in need in Katati, in within Katati, Katati City, does IMDT see that person as within their responsibility and their purview? Or do you see that as someone who, well, really, that's Katati's responsibility, but maybe we'd be willing to help out of the goodness of our hearts. But do you understand my question?
Absolutely. Yes, we absolutely would see that as our responsibility, especially in light of the fact that, you know, the limited resources in Katati. So we would hope that you would reach out to us so that we could come and assist. So absolutely, we would see that within our responsibility.
If I can add, I think the the distinction around jurisdictions mainly applies around enforcement of encampment closures, right? So if it's on in unincorporated county areas, the county takes the legal responsibility and the sheriff gets involved. Whereas if it's in city of Santa Rosa, the city, Santa Rosa, takes responsibility and and Santa Rosa PD is involved in enforcement. And so it's more around kind of the the legal jurisdictional parameters of enforcement, I think, where that comes up.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. That makes sense.
Sure.
And no, no boundaries on the service provision piece. If there's someone out in Sea Ranch we need to see, send us to Sea Ranch. We'll 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 make the drive.
And even if they're on private property, if a private property owner reaches out and and needs our assistance, as long as we have permission from that private property owner and we work with them, we are we're willing to go and assist with with the private property owner.
Well, thank you all very much for the for the tremendous work that you do and for the presentation and keep it up.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Okay, so now we'll move on to approval of the final agenda, and I understand we have an additional item, Mr. Robin.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So we do have a additional late add to the agenda. And that was distributed to the council members and added to the public portal, so it's available to the public. But this is an item on, it's an update on the discussion that we'd had at the last council meeting regarding the county redistricting. And it was added because, you know, just today, actually, we became aware of, we don't have new maps, new district maps, but we became aware of some new alternatives that are being explored by the county at their November 16th meeting. So this will be our only opportunity to have that conversation as a council before the county has their conversation, which is essentially the last public workshop before they finalize the districting maps.
Mr. Mayor, can I just make a a brief comment, which is to say that the item hasn't been added to your agenda yet. The council has to take an action to to add it. It has to be done by a two-thirds vote. The findings that you need to make are that there's a need to take immediate action. I think Damian indicated that the reason why you need to offer your thoughts is because the last workshop is on the 16th, which is before your next regular meeting. And that the need for the for action came to the attention of the of you subsequent to your agenda being posted. And I think I heard Damian say that it came to his attention today, which was after the agenda was posted. So if you make both those factual findings and you vote by two-thirds vote, which would be four, four votes, you can add this item to the agenda.
And that would be under the auspices of a motion?
Correct.
Yeah. And and Mayor, if if the council so chooses to hear the item, I would propose it's just at the end of the regular calendar, the last item.
Yeah, okay. We don't need to hear the item before we determine if we want to have it on the agenda. Yeah, okay. We don't need to hear the item before we determine if we want to have it on the agenda, correct? Okay, so I would be willing to entertain a motion to add this item to the end of our agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to move that we add this to our, our agenda.
We have a motion?
I'd be happy to second that motion.
So we have a motion in a second. Ms. Burgess, would you give us a roll call, please?
Just to be clear, the motion, as we understood it, includes the findings that we suggested.
That's correct.
And let me amend that to say, including that we find both findings to be correct and needed.
Thank you.
Councilmember.
Thank you, Ms. Burgess. Roll call. Sorry to interrupt.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes, thank you very much. Now we've added that to our agenda, and we will move on to citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matter not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not related, not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2021-01, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. And looking to our attendees tonight, if you would like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon, or if you're dialing in, dial star nine. Mayor Moore, that will end the public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Burgess. And actually, we move on to our consent, consent calendar. And if there are no items to be pulled, if there's no discussion, I'd be happy to entertain a motion on that.
I would be happy to move the consent calendar.
I'll second that. This is Councilmember Ford.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Ms. Burgess, a roll call, please.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes, thank you very much. Now we'll move on to item number 10, direction on future agenda items. Are there any requests for any future items at this moment? Since we kind of set our priorities a couple of meetings ago. Councilmember Sparks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I recall that last December, we had a discussion about license plate scanners, and there was some mention that we would come back and sort of take a look at how that had gone for the first year, perhaps. So I'd like to request that we, at some point, maybe in December or January, have a, a report on the license plate scanners and maybe a discussion of, of whether we want to continue that program.
Thank you. And I don't see any other hands raised, so thank you very much for that. Now we'll move on to regular agenda item and number 11A, license agreement for 80 George Street.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So let's do a quick staff report on this one. So the city owns a, basically a, a small site, a third of an acre on George Street. It's behind 8,000 Old Redwood Highway, which is that, that architecturally unique building next to the auto, that auto dealer there on Old Red between, it's between George and La Plaza. And going, so going back in time a little bit, the, the former redevelopment agency held that property. When the redevelopment agency dissolved, working with State Department of Finance, we had to develop a long-range property management plan, which essentially sent our properties one of two directions. Either had, either it had a, a legitimate governmental use, which was very tightly defined by DOF, or if it didn't meet one of the very narrow criteria for governmental use, then it had to be sold. And so, sold in those proceeds essentially distributed to taxing entities. And so an example of one of those kind of properties would be the property in front of our train depot, which is, is one we've been talking about selling. It's, it's that, that, that is actually in process now. But the other group, this primarily consisted of parks and those sort of facilities. They had legitimate governmental uses, and so they, they left the redevelopment agency and rolled into general government. And 80 George Street was one of the properties that, that the city retained. And that was via the approved long-range property management plan with DOF as a public parking facility. So very, very much akin to what we have by Dos, the former Dos Amigos or downtown, that kind of general public parking use. The property currently is not in the near-term CIP, so it hasn't been developed with blacktop and connecting sidewalk, but that is the, that is the long-range plan for, for that property. In the past, the property is, it has been, it has been lightly rocked in areas. You can tell that there's been some, some rocking historically on the, on the property. And it's, we have also evaluated it environmentally. There's nothing there, plant or animal. So it's essentially, it's been effectively used that way historically, and it's, it's been informally used for access also in the recent past. So Neville, who actually is joining us tonight, Neville Hormuz is the owner of Loud and Clear Music, and they're looking at making a move to 8,000 Old Redwood Highway. And they approached, he approached the city and asked if, if he could via a license agreement use that property for off-site parking. And given that's the long-term plan for the lot, it seems like a consistent use with the city's plans. And therefore, staff engaged with, with him to negotiate a license agreement. And that's what's attached to the council packet. The basic terms are in the staff report, but I'll recite some of the key ones, which is it's a, you know, initial five-year license. The use of the property is non-exclusive, which means that anybody can use it. It's a public property. And the licensee would be responsible for rocking the parking area to make it all weather and then general, just general property maintenance. Use should coincide with normal business hours. Any signage for the lot would have to be approved first from the city through the normal process. The annual license fee, consistent with our other city licenses, are a dollar. And then the only limitation is, is grading. So eventually, you know, before we go into actual CIP improvements, we would have to do an archaeological review. So that's why grading, you know, wouldn't be allowed at this point. But rocking, you know, surface, you know, you just basically can't dig in undisturbed soil. That's the, that's the general limitation. And through just normal practice with the license agreements, we would get our normal insurance and indemnification and the normal termination clauses if things don't work out for either party, for whatever reason. And I will say that it also, it also seems like it would be a good use from, from the respect that, that Loud and Clear is looking to move buildings. And it would, I think, help to just retain that business in town. And with that, that's the end of the presentation, but again, I mentioned Neville is here tonight and can answer questions with his, from his perspective. And of course, I can answer any questions from the city side.
Thank you, Damian. Mr. Hormuz, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
No, I, I really, I just want to tell you how much I appreciate working with Damian and Noah on this project. And I understand that that building is important for historical nature for the city, and I'm going to work hard to maintain that and work with the city to keep it nice like we want to keep it. And it's going to be a nice future for us to actually own a spot as opposed to leasing a spot where we currently are. So I appreciate you guys thinking about this. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and open up to councilmembers for questions. Councilmember Ford?
Just one question. Does the, the site have whatever curb cuts or entrance and exits off the street it already needs? Or is the city or the applicant going to create those?
Well, I'll just start, and then, you know, Neville, if you have anything to add, feel free. But the, the site currently does have an access from George Street. It's an existing access. And so I, I don't know that there's any additional access needed, but I, I think if the council decides to approve the license agreement, we would continue to have discussions with Neville on any improvements that are planned for the site.
Thanks. Mayor Moore, sorry, Mr. Harmus, do you want to add something?
Well, it, it will also have an entrance through the back of the property at 8,000 Old Redwood Highway on George Street. There will be an entrance to that parking area there, as well as there's an existing one a little further down the street. So there will be a couple of, there's a couple of access already there.
Okay, thanks. Mayor Moore, can I follow up? I know I said I only had one, but I think I actually have three.
I, I'm not surprised, but you certainly may.
Second, there's no, no changes planned for any substantial trees on that lot?
No, I, I, I love the trees there. They're wonderful. We wouldn't disturb any nesting. We would work around the trees. There's plenty of space for parking there. So I think we can make it work.
Okay, I'm, yeah, I'm a little worried about, you know, soil compaction around redwoods and things like that. And, and so I don't know if in the agreement, there's any issues, any consideration of distance from redwoods and things like that. So I presume you'll keep in touch with the city about that and, and treat the trees well. Third issue is, once it's clear that it's a parking place, I'm, is there any protection and whose responsibility would it be to monitor people who might start storing their RVs there? Or say a neighboring business that parks its stock of cars there or something like that?
Yeah, well, the licensee would be generally the, the point of contact just to monitor the property. But, you know, if there's, if there are issues that require city code enforcement or police service, then of course we would support that. But we would, you know, we would hope that the, that the licensee would keep an eye on the property, you know, which currently we don't have, right? So hopefully it improve, actually improve the situation, I'm hoping.
Yeah, it's just the trade-off between now that everybody sees it's a place to park, you know, does that invite folks in? Thanks, that's all.
Yeah.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Landman?
Yeah, I'm starting off with, off with three, and I hope it doesn't grow too. So I better go quick and see if I can go, think of more. So the first thing I wanted to ask, in, in general, I will say actually to begin, this strikes me as, as a reasonable request. It's a good use. It helps a local business. It's an area that's planned to be parking in our plans. Therefore, there's some logic to this. But we're looking at the site. The one thing that I was, wanted to ask about, in particular, you can see this clearly if you look at packet page 198, the aerial view of the map. There is a relatively new concrete pad behind 8,000 Old Redwood. Actually, it's behind a small section of that building. This listed as 30 George Street. Looking at, I noticed there's room back there to park anywhere from five to eight vehicles probably, which would leave about eight slots for parking on the side there, which matches the named parking for Loud and Clear Music in its old location. So I'm curious, does, would Mr. Hormuz own that parking behind on that pad when he purchases this or not? And, and why we wouldn't use that instead? I, I'm sure there's an answer. I noticed this pad was put in when the used car lot was put together. So perhaps the used car lot has some ownership of this, but I, I was just wondering if I could have an answer to that first.
That, that is a good question. It, it, it is part of the property. There is an easement on that, that cement slab, 30 feet from the back door to the property line currently. And that's because I think that we're trying to limit the amount of traffic going in and out of Redwood Highway. So this easement allows that car dealership next door to have access without having to pull cars in and out of Redwood Highway. Is that correct, Damian?
Yeah, the access easement does, does belong to that car dealership. And, yeah, and, and then separately, although I don't, I'm not familiar with the plans, there is a requirement for ADA parking close to the building, which is separate and different than anything off-site.
That makes sense to me. I, I learned something interesting researching this. Google Maps time function is really interesting. You can look at a street view and you can go back a couple of years. So this was recently put in, and I, I guess that easement makes sense to reduce traffic going on and off Old Redwood, which I think we all agree can be problematic.
Right.
So let's see. The next question I have, what would be our mitigation process for any noise problems we might have with neighbors next to the space due to the new usage? Now, I'm pretty sure, given the time of day usage, that we probably won't run into this. But as we're opening this up, and as these neighbors have basically had a nice green field for many years, I want to make sure we are protecting their interests. So I wanted to know, would it be the typical noise complaint process through city staff or the police and ultimately our ability to terminate if we ran into problems with this use?
Yeah, so the, in the license itself, there is a, one of these provisions is that it coincides with normal business hours. If there's a couple of cases, right? One is there's noise issues during normal business hours, in which case we would work with the licensee on trying to correct that. And then, you know, in a worst-case scenario, if that just persists and we, we just can't get that under control, then we can terminate the license. If, if it's an out, like, middle-of-the-night type noise issue, just because somebody totally unrelated to the business or licensee is there, then it would be just a normal, like nuisance, if you like, any other, that we would deal with anywhere else in town.
I think that sounds very workable. Thank you. So the last thing I want to kind of ask about, on page 192, paragraph C, mentions pesticide and herbicide use, and it mentions that the licensee agrees not to apply pesticides, insecticides, et cetera, without the prior written consent of the city manager, who at their discretion can either approve or disapprove. And I wonder if we could add something in there about Cattati's rather firm guidelines and not using synthetic pesticides, herbicides, fungicides on public property, publicly owned property? Because reading this, you would think this is something you may expect that if we asked nicely, that the city manager would approve, but this would, I, it's very rare occasions. We allow this, is my understanding, and this is what the council pushed a few years ago. So if we could just have a call-out mentioning that, I think that would be helpful. That'll make it easier to plan for managing that lot for Mr. Hormuz too, because he'll know what is available to him to use and, and what wouldn't be, which certainly would be synthetic pesticides or herbicides. And lastly, last thing I added, as Mr. Ford made me think of it, I think this would be a good idea, actually, to add something, just a line in here somewhere that requires the licensee to advise the city of any things they see as potential issues. And this could be, as was mentioned, somebody parking their RV there, noise, closing, whatever. That way, it's on record that we expect a heads-up if we run into something. And I'm sure this would happen anyhow, but I think just so we have a good understanding of how we want to deal with managing this lot together, it would be nice to have that note in there. And those are the things I wanted to ask about and the things I wanted to ask for. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Mark. I, I totally agree with you. I'm not a fan of pesticides, so that would never be a thing that would, that would be going for. And yeah, we'll work with the city to see what's proper and making it look nice and, and be safe for people to, to use that as a parking area.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Spark?
Thank you. This seems like a good use, and I'm totally supportive. But when Councilmember Landman mentioned noise issues, it made me think we are having some problems with. other privately owned parking lots having leaf blowers running very early in the morning. So my question is just Neville, do you have any plans to run a leaf blower at six in the morning to clean out the leaves?
I am not a fan of leaf blowers.
Okay. Well, thank you, though.
And I've never been up at six in the morning.
Yeah, I was gonna add that, but I didn't want to throw that in there.
Through the mirror, I want to go there. We are talking musicians. Nobody's up at six, especially with a leaf blower.
I do have a question, though. I know from time to time that Loud and Clear has had, has had some community events, some industry events there. What do you anticipate on the number of vehicles that would be capacity there? I would imagine you've sketched it out a little bit.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, we, you know, we currently have seven spots in the front. There's about nine spots on the side of our current location for staff parking. And we probably use another on an event day, another dozen spots. There are some times where we have larger events where we're using some of the park and ride and things like that, but it's a rarity. So I think that we're going to try to create, and I'll work with Damian on the layout of this. But I think we want to create about fifteen spots.
Okay, so if you do have an event that you anticipate is going to be greater, you would still use the park and ride or something along those lines?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I don't see any further hands up from the council. So at this point, I will open it up for a public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. Looking to our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon or dial star nine if you're calling in from your telephone. Mayor Moore, that will end public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Burgess. Councilmember Harvey, I do have one more comment. I do appreciate the fact that you are looking to maintain the aesthetic integrity of that particular building, that location. So that that would be a nice asset on there to continue that. So, Harvey, you had a question?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to make a comment. I'm glad that this is consistent with what is that we intended for that, for that lot. It moves us in that direction and I'm glad that it will help with business that's been in our community for a while. And I hope that the relationship will work well. And I'm glad to see that you are able to purchase a building of your own so that you don't have to lease. So I'm looking forward to you moving there. And I think it's a great location, given all the music festivals that are in the park. So I think that's perfect for you. So and I, if you'd like, Mayor, I'm happy to make a motion.
I would be happy to entertain a motion.
Okay, I would make a motion that we authorize the city manager to execute a license agreement with Shadowlands LLC to utilize eighty George Street as a non-exclusive parking area.
Are you including Vice Mayor Landman's addition about a condition that the licensee notify the city of any issues?
Yes, any issues. And I believe there was some comments about wording about pesticides.
Yes, and that was going to be something along the lines of per city policy.
First, okay, with those two inclusions, yes. Thank you, Ben.
We have a motion in a second. Ms. Burgess, would you kindly give us a vocal call?
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes, thank you very much. Best of luck on that, Neville.
Thank you so much, all of you. Thank you, Mayor.
When do you anticipate occupancy on that?
I believe we're going to finish up escrow at the middle to end of December. And then there's six weeks of some, some, you know, the ADA restroom, the ADA ramp, that kind of stuff. And then hopefully we'll be in there by February.
Perfect. We'll be looking forward to that revenue cutting.
Thank you so much.
Okay. So now we'll move on to our item eleven B, discussion action regarding funding of pension plans and financing of city street improvements. And I'm assuming this is Ms. Quarters.
That would be me. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmember, fellow staff, and members of our community. This evening, we're bringing back for your consideration the pension financing, financing plan with the detailed information on the actual bids received in that private placement market compared to our expectations of a rapidly changing public market. So providing the presentation this evening is our specialist team of Dimitri Semnoff from Calm Uni, as well as Mike Kavanaugh from Hilltop Securities. They're going to go over the process, details, and all the fun, financial stuff. They're going to not let me share this time. And then I'll jump in at the end and provide a brief summary of our recommendation and the action proposed by staff. So go ahead, Dimitri.
All right, thank you, Angela. Good evening, Mayor Moore and members of the council. I'd like to provide a brief overview of where we've been. Next slide, please. Back in May, on May eighteenth, we did a study session with the city council, going through all the aspects and details of the CalPERS's unfunded accrued liability, the UAL, how much money it costs, what are the strategies that can be applied to manage those costs and how those costs can be reduced. Through the continuing work with the staff and with the feedback from the council, on July twenty seventh, we brought back a comprehensive strategy presentation where we looked not just at the pension costs in vacuum, but also looked at the city's reserves, city's capital improvements needs, you know, future projections for revenues and and capital improvements, and combined all those into a comprehensive cash management strategy that incorporates not just the payment of the pension related costs, but also making sure that all other needs, capital improvement needs and reserve needs of the city are fully incorporated into the strategy. Following that, on October twenty sixth, just a couple of weeks ago, the council adopted the Pension Unfunded Acquired Liability Management Policy that takes a lot of the principles that we covered in the study session and in the comprehensive strategy presentation and adopts those as a citywide policy to make sure that in the future the pension liability is prudently managed and the city has the resources and tools that it needs to control, what happens when CalPERS brings additional layers of unfunded liability. And also, the city council approved the formation of the Section one fifteen trust. And that will be happening over the next few months to start funding, you know, funding reserves for future pension costs. So that's been the progress to date. So what's happening today is we're providing some additional analysis. Based on the city council, city staff direction, Hilltop Securities, the city's placement agent, went into the bank market and distributed a very detailed and extensive RFP to a large group of banks, soliciting proposals to refund a portion of the city's UAL and then also fund some of the city's street improvement projects. So Mike Kavanaugh with Hilltop Securities, he will be providing a summary of the bids. And he will also talk about the state of the public markets. Because as you will see, that there is a couple of ways that the UAL and the street projects can be financed. It's either with public markets, which is issuance of municipal bonds, or with a bank loan, which is also called as the private placement. So we'll talk about that and compare the bids that we received from banks with what we expect to currently see in the markets and also talk about what can be expected from the markets over the next couple of months. A word of caution, our analysis is based on the twenty twenty actuarial reports recently released by CalPERS. So all information has been updated. Back in July, we were still dealing with the twenty nineteen numbers. Since then, CalPERS has released the update for twenty twenty, so that's been incorporated. And CalPERS's reports are still based on the seven percent discount rate. You previously mentioned that they announced really strong results for twenty twenty one fiscal year and automatically triggered this reduction of the discount rate from seven percent to six point eight percent. But given the impacts of the discount rate reduction creating additional unfunded liability that will start earning interest at the discount rate, we believe that the impacts of that are mostly awash. So we feel that the current analysis is actually very stable and fairly, fairly represents what the city is looking to to gain from executing on the strategy. Next slide, please. All right, so to provide a brief overview, on the pension side, the strategy is as follows. Altogether, set aside about nine million dollars to address a portion, a big portion of the unfunded accrued liability. Five million of that will come from issuance of taxable pension obligation bonds. And then the proceeds of that will go directly to CalPERS to pay down the unfunded liability. On top of that, the city will take about two point eight million dollars from its reserves and make a cash payment, or what they call an additional discretionary payment, to CalPERS to further reduce the unfunded liability. And then also, the city will take one point two million dollars of its reserves and set it aside into the Section one fifteen trust. So altogether, that adds up to about nine million dollars. And that's about ninety percent of the city's unfunded liability. So and the reason for the ninety percent is currently based on the assumptions of how the six point eight percent discount rate reduction will play out after the twenty twenty one investment returns are taken into consideration. With all, all these things, the city will be at about one hundred percent, give or take, pension funded level after twenty twenty one impacts. Okay, so this only assumes the discount rate reduction impacts and the investment performance impacts. Just today and yesterday and today, CalPERS has been updating additional information for their board meeting. And it seems like they will be tweaking some more assumptions. And based on that information, it looks like some additional unfunded liability may be created. But none of that has been taken into consideration because that is not certain yet. But the goal is refund about ninety percent of the UAL or refund and set aside funds to to pay down about ninety percent of the UAL. And then let the next year adjustments take care of the rest. Next slide, please. So we talked about how four million dollars of the nine million dollars for the unfunded liability will come from reserves. What's important to understand is, as a part of the comprehensive strategy, you know, we look not just at the pension costs in their vacuum, but also looked at the street projects that the city needs to undertake, how much it has in reserves and revenue set aside for street projects. And it was determined that a good strategy in this case is taking about four million dollars that the city has in its, in its discretion, in its general fund, and use those reserves to to pay down or set aside funds to pay down the UAL in the future. So that creates a need to, to look for alternative funding sources for the street projects. And that's where the comprehensive strategy comes in. Because looking at how much money the city needs to fund the streets over the next year, it adds up to about seven million, six hundred fifty thousand dollars. And the plan is to issue tax exempt debt at a much lower interest rate than the taxable pension obligation bonds. And some of that money, about four million dollars, will cover the projects you know, for the budgeted street projects. And then also, as we were looking at the budgeted street projects, the city identified that some additional street work is beneficiary, beneficial to be completed at this time. And that created a need for an additional three million, six hundred fifty thousand dollars in borrowing. So all that work will be funded through the issuance of tax, tax exempt, street financing in the form of lease revenue borrowings. So the four million dollar reserve replenishment allows for cash contributions to pension plans and Section one fifteen trust. So in the end, everything is awash and the city is staying in the same cash position as it would have, you know, without the implementation of the policy. So there is no additional use of reserves related to the implementation of this policy. Okay, next slide, please. So this summarizes the the financing plan, sources and uses. On the sources side, about twelve million, million, eight hundred fifty thousand dollars will be borrowed, five million, five point one million in the form of pension obligation bonds, and seven million, seven fifty, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in the form of street project financing. And on the uses side, seven point eight million dollars will be used to pay down the UAL. About one point two million dollars will be set aside into the Section one fifteen trust, future payments to CalPERS. Three million, six hundred fifty thousand dollars will be used to fund street projects. And the cost of issuance are approximately two hundred thousand dollars. So that balances the sources and uses. Next slide, please. And with that, as I mentioned, there's two ways that the city can finance this. On the one side, you have the public sale or issuance of municipal bonds. And on another side, you have a private placement or a bank loan. And I'm going to turn it over to Mike Kavanaugh of Hilltop Securities, who will guide you through the discussion of the two different methods of sale. Mike, take it away.
Thanks. Thanks, Dimitri. Can everyone hear me all right? Can anyone hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, we hear you.
Okay, great. Sorry about that. So yeah, my name is Mike Kavanaugh. I'm with Hilltop Securities. I do what I call I'm a public finance investment banker. And what that means, at least as of recently, is we look at deals two types of ways, as Dimitri mentioned. We look at a original public sale, which is standard operating procedure for most investment bankers and public finance in California, except over the last ten years. Within the last ten years, a private placement market has developed where, instead of offering to the general public, you offer it directly to a bank, or we call it a private placement. So we've been doing that as an alternative to a public offering for the better part of ten years now. As an example, I served as your placement agent on two private placements, one in twenty twenty for the tax allocation bonds and one in twenty nineteen for the South Sonoma Business Park. So you have accomplished two very successful refundings with private placements in the past. And I will tell you that a lot of clients are very adamant that they don't want to go through the public sale process. They only want to look at private placements. But and working with your staff, we've gone and we're considering both and presenting that to you tonight. And and these next two slides will kind of break the differences out between the two. And I'm not going to go through and read every line item, but I want to just highlight a few things. If you look at about the first five line items, credit rating, offering statement, due diligence, time to close, issuer involvement, those are all very time consuming, expensive items that are only required really in a public sale. So where I break down, the easy breakdown is private sales or public sales, excuse me. Public sales require a lot more time from an issuer and therefore a cost a lot more. But there's a trade off with a private placement. And the trade off generally is there's less costs and and a few others that I'll get into in a moment. So off of this slide, I take that, you know, it's really a time commitment, a cost commitment to an issuer for a public sale. And a private placement doesn't have that amount of cost because it could be done quicker and easier, there's less people involved. So if we go to the next slide, I'm going to highlight a couple more items that I I think differentiate between the public sale and private placement. The bottom three light items, prepayment flexibility. Private placements let you refund or recall or refinance something in year one. A public sale, ten year lockout, you can't touch it for ten years. One of the other advantages is a drawdown structure, whereas in a public offering, once you issue the bonds, you start accruing interest right away in a public sale. On a private placement for new money transactions, such as what your tax exempt streets would do, you may not spend all that money at once. So in a drawdown structure, you don't pay interest until you spend that money. And depending on how fast you spend that money, could save hundreds of thousands of dollars. Now, the last slide on continued disclosure, it matters with some. A public offering, it's a federal commitment that you're promising to provide continued disclosure to investors. On, on a bank commitment, you're just promising to send them your financials. So and there is a cost differential. There is no cost to just send financials. Continuing disclosure, you need a continued disclosure agent and and some extra cost uh on a public sale. Uh, and and the big real, the big item here, I take away between a public sale and a private placement, especially in today's market, is we you have in hand today, three bids from banks that have a locked interest rate, and you can close in the next sixty days. I could tell you right now, if i- if you determine, hey, we don't want to take any of those bank bids and let's look at a public sale, I I would estimate it's ninety days, maybe a hundred twenty days before we could lock your interest rates. So I have a lot of issues and I go through this process with a lot of issues. I recommend it all the time is, hey, let's look at the bank market right now uh for this type of investment or or this type of loan or borrowing you want to do. And at that time, we could compare it to a public offering. A public offering is pretty transparent. They happen all the time. Uh, a bank sale is more of a private sale, so you don't really know. But when you actually have bids in hand, like you do, you have three bids in hand, then you can really compare the two. And that's what we'll get into here later i- in in the process. But there is a trade-off. You know, there's advantages and disadvantages to each. And we're going to present them to you and let you make a decision. Uh, next slide please. So uh as I just mentioned, um a- and I I recommend this with a lot is, hey, w- let's get bank bids, so you can have something in hand that you can say, hey, this works out great, or hey, Mike, maybe let's go down the public uh public sale route. So uh what we did, we went out and got uh we a- as we put together a request for terms, very detailed, working with the staff, they were great. And I sent it out to twenty-one banks, right? And we we received three bids back. Uh, and those bids were from these three listed banks, First Foundation Bank, Umpqua Bank, and Capital One. All top-tier li- lenders, all are very qualified and have been in business for a while, who I would trust to be able to close your transaction. Uh, so that's the highlight of the process. And now we'll get into specific bids and and bid results. So can I have the next slide please? So we asked for uh, we asked for bids on a fifteen-year basis, so a level amortization on fifteen years. Um, fifteen years, fifteen years is is pretty the sweet spot for banks. Generally, I find uh bank placements at fifteen years are are comparable to private place, or excuse me, public offerings. Uh, a- as you get out to a twenty-year bid, wh- which I'll show you on the next slide, uh, y- you lose a lot of banks, so it's not as efficient. Uh, this was a unique circumstance where we got three bank bids for each.
Mike, it looks like you froze there.
Dimitri, would you want to just kind of chime in while Mike's system comes back up?
Sure. So with the fifteen-year results, we got three bids. We got bids from First Foundation, Uncle Bank, and Capital One. And uh First Foundation and Uncle Bank, they have very distinct features um in in what they're proposing to do. Uh, Capital One, actually, under both fifteen and twenty-year results, uh, they're very similar to First Foundation in terms of their structure, but their pricing is significantly uh higher than First Foundation Bank. So under both fifteen and twenty-year um bid summaries, we're really not going to go into Capital One. They're really not the best uh bid that the uh that the city received. So comparing uh First Foundation and Capital One, First Foundation is a much better proposal for a very similar structure. So going forward, we will concentrate on the comparison of First Foundation Bank versus Uncle Bank. And uh the table on the screen summarizes the interest rates received as well as other features of the proposal. So on the First Foundation uh side, um, the interest rates are uh two point three six percent for fifteen years on a tax exempt side and three point two eight percent on the taxable side. And then the all-in uh T I C or total interest cost really incorporates all the um all the cost of issuance into the rate. So if you take all the costs uh to put together the financing and um express them um in the form of the interest rate markup, that's where you would end up. Okay, so very similar to how you would see the A P R uh calculated on on the bank windows. Right, so that that's the um that's the pricing. So the pricing is um it's the lowest that the city received. On the Uncle Bank side, you see that the tax exempt rate is two point six seven percent, and on the taxable side is three point four four percent, so slightly higher. Right, comparing the prepayment options, they're pretty similar. Um, First Foundation allows you to prepay the transaction after se- uh seven years without any penalties. And they have a declining penalty of three percent in the first two years, then two percent in years three and four, and one percent in years five and six. Uncle Bank's side is a little bit more rigid on the prepayment. Uh, there are three percent uh penalty is in the first three years, and then two percent in years four and five, one percent uh year six and seven, and um zero percent after year eight. Right, so a little bit more rigid, but very comparable. Both banks have the rate locked uh through closing. Uh, First Foundation cannot close the transaction until January seventh. It's their capacity issue, their um you know, their pipeline is pretty full um until the end of the year. So that pushes it in um into the beginning uh of January, where Uncle Bank can close it right before Christmas. Um, yeah, based on the discussion with the staff, we don't think it's a, you know, it's a major difference. Both banks have locked the rate through closing. Um, where the big difference comes in is in how the collateral for the financing is structured. Um, so we went out to the banks with a request to only secure the financing with a pledge of streets under the lease leaseback uh structure that we've discussed before. So where the streets are essentially leased um by the city to itself and then back. Um, and then the the stream of payments is pledged to the bank as their repayment source. So First Foundation said streets are great, um but we would like to have something more tangible. So they've put out a request to have an uh some essential asset of the city, whether it's a fire station or um you know, or a city hall, or something along those lines. Um, uh, you know, potentially, we've also discussed, you know, less valuable assets, but the bank wants something that um you know, is is pretty pretty essential to the operations of the city. So something on top of streets would have to be pledged. And it doesn't need to be for the full, you know, twelve point eight million dollar amount. It can be something along the lines of six uh to eight million dollars in uh in insured value, which is the proxy for valuing the assets in the public finance side. So First Foundation, in exchange for the lower rate, um they would like some uh some additional assets. Um, where Uncle Bank only wants the streets. Uh, they're okay with the streets only uh pledge. Uh, no additional asset is required. So then, and as far as special provisions go, both banks are willing to um provide uh the drawdown for twelve months. Uh, and then also, both banks have agreed to allow the city to make additional payments up to uh ten to twenty percent of principal amount per year without any penalties. So if if the city comes across some uh additional funds, uh, they would be able to apply those funds to pay down the loans faster. Uh, not fully prepay or refinance, but paid down to to enough, I don't know, about up to a million dollars per year uh without any penalties. So and then uh Uncle Bank also offered what we call um relationship pricing, which is in return for one million dollars in deposits, they're willing to reduce their rate by um fifteen hundreds of a percent um on each loan. So for um one million dollars gets you a reduction um on one of the one of the loans. So, for example, if the city puts up two million dollars, both sides, the tax exempt and the taxable, can get the benefit of a lower rate. Alright, so that's the comparison. Uh, with First Foundation, you get better rate, um better prepayment structure. Um, and um but they do want some additional asset uh pledged as in the form of collateral. Uh, Uncle Bank, higher rate, um a bit less, you know, or more rigid uh prepayment structure. Um, but um streets only. And there is a potential to buy down the rate through deposits, and the deposits will have to be maintained throughout the whole term of the loans. Right, so that compares against um kind of the last section of this table at the bottom, the public markets. And these are indicative rates as of October twenty eighth. And the market has been very volatile recently. And um really, the difference between the the rates that you that you're seeing, for example, on the tax exempt side, the interest rates of two point two nine percent compared to two fifty one T I C for First Foundation. Um, that's about, you know, one-fifth of a percent, right, uh point two of a percent. Um, there's been swings, daily swings, that um amount to about as much in the interest rate differential. So um while the differential is, you know, looks pretty pretty significant with the current volatility, and uh as Mike pointed out, it will be three to four months before your rate is locked. Um, it's it's hard to tell where the public markets will end up at. Uh, and recently, there's been a lot of volatility. The Fed stop is reducing its bond purchases. So that uh tends to create upward pressure on the on the interest rates in the public markets. Also, with a fifteen-year transaction and and twenty-year transaction as well, in the public markets, you cannot prepay um for the first ten years. So there is very little for the flexibility. But you can do it with a streets-only structure. Alright, so that's the idea. First Foundation, lowest rate from the banks, but they want some additional assets. Uncle Bank's side, the higher rate, streets only, public markets, by far the best interest rate. Um, very inflexible in terms of repayment, streets only, but also very volatile. So that's the fifteen years. Uh, next slide please. Twenty years, very similar. First Foundation has a much lower interest rate than Uncle Bank. Uh, two forty-five on tax exempt, three thirty-three taxable versus two eighty-nine for Umpqua and three sixty-six uh you know, uh for taxable with Umpqua. First Foundation has more generous prepayment provision. Uh, with a twenty-year structure, Uncle Bank um wants the first ten years to have a prepay penalty. You know, the same structural um considerations apply. Uh, First Foundation wants an additional uh essential asset, where Uncle Bank is okay with streets only. Uh, same thing for drawdown, for partial prepayment without penalty and the rate buydown. And the same concerns with the public markets. So um much lower interest rate, a lot of volatility, cannot prepay for ten years, streets only. So that's the summary um of the fifteen and twenty-year options. And I don't know, um is, has Mike got a chance to get back online?
I think Mike is back in as an attendee.
I I should be here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My internet dropped. I I apologize. One of those, one of those issues that working from home. But uh, thank you, Dimitri. I see that you got through the fifteen and twenty-year results, uh, wh- which goes to the slide of comparing the placement options. And I just wanted to reiterate what to me, I heard Dimitri say is, the public market swings. So the difference between First Foundation and the public market on the twenty-year bid is about ten basis points difference, or at least the time of this analysis. Uh, I can tell you, the market has moved ten basis points in a day. So that differential, uh I I would say, most of my clients, issuer clients, would take the bird in the hand, saying the placement with a bank with a locked rate over then taking interest rate risk over the next couple of months, uh based on a ten basis point difference.
Mike, uh Mike, uh sorry to interrupt, but just to clarify, a basis point, a basis point is one hundredth of a percent. So ten basis points is one tenth of a percent.
Yeah, point one percent. Point, one tenth of one percent, i- is ten basis points, yes.
Mike, it's the mayor. Can you, do you have a way of turning up your volume at all?
Yep. Um.
If not, we'll struggle through it.
Is that better there? Can you hear me better now?
Yes, thank you.
Oh yeah, sorry about that, Mr. Mayor. Um, so uh we have seen very volatile rates. I I don't know if anyone follows, you you know, looking at just the ten-year treasury, that has moved ten uh twenty basis points, two tenths of one percent in the last couple of weeks alone. And we're seeing a lot of that recently. There was a Fed meeting. Uh, the the idea is that uh the Fed's going to start increasing rates. So everyone's projecting interest rates to increase um i- in the market right now. Obviously, I I can't tell the future, but um a bird in the hand is worth a lot to a lot of my issuers right now, to avoid any interest rate risk. There's nothing to say that interest rate can't go down in the future. Everyone just wants to protect against the downside. Um, so then I I'd ask, uh, I I can't see the slides, but going to the slide, I believe it's slide eleven, comparing private placements options. Uh, here we have on this slide, i- is really the two differences, and I got cut off right there. So Capital One, we kind of dropped out of the equation, right? Because they're not financially as good as First Foundation, but have a similar requirement. So uh dropping Capital One out, we look at First Foundation. And here, what I take away is uh they're going to require another essential asset, somewhere in around the six billion dollar range is is how, anywhere from four to six, is kind of how he quoted me. Um, but what they offer is the lowest rates. You have the lowest rates with them. Uh, you have to add an additional asset. But Umpqua, on the other hand, doesn't require anything other than the streets, right? Uh, a- a- as a pledged asset. Uh, so that's obviously a positive, can't really quantify that. They do allow, as Dimitri was mentioning, um uh relationship pricing. I think we figured out if the city deposits four million dollars with them, their rates would be about equate uh the uh the equivalent of First Foundation. So to put that in perspective, um, a- and the those deposits would would still be yours earning interest, uh but the interest is not a lot at all. Um, so those are the differences between First Foundation, Uncle Bank. Uh, both banks are great. They allow allow that drawdown structure. I think that's right, where I cut off last time. It is, allows you to save interest because you don't pay for money you haven't used yet. It's a great, it's a great uh structure that the public market doesn't allow. Um, a- and obviously, as I touched about it before, is is the call provision, the prepayment provision on both of these banks, you can call them in year one. I I don't know why you would, but say it's a non-economic reason that you want to call these, or 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 there's money that comes in or something along those lines. Both of these banks will allow you to call bonds in year one. O- on a public offering, you're locked out for ten years. You can't call those bonds for ten years. In in a standard structure, obviously, we could do some uh different ideas, but it costs a lot to change that call provision. Uh, so that's kind of uh m- my analysis of comparing the two and summarizing the bid results. Um, I'm happy to answer your questions, or I'm going to turn it back over to Dimitri to finish up the presentation.
So Angel, do we want to take questions or finish the presentation first?
I think we can go ahead and uh move on with the presentation, and that way we can address uh the group of questions altogether.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next slide please. So now that we've uh, you know, thrown a bunch of percentage uh percentages at you, uh what does it mean? Um, how much would the city be saving uh in terms of pension costs by implementing the strategy? So and here's a word of caution, because um it's, when we first talked about uh the pension pension savings, uh it assumed a much more simple scenario. We've added a couple of com- uh more complex issues here. So we're taking some of the money and sit uh putting it aside into section one fifteen trust to wait how things will play out with the culprits' discount rate. Um, so that adds complexity to the calculation. And also, there is additional streets borrowing included in the financing that um has absolutely no bearing on the pensions. So what we did here is we simplified things. And we assumed that uh there is no section one fifteen trust, and rather, all the funds are going to pay off culprits. And in reality, section one fifteen trust hopefully will be earning very similar return to to the discount rate. Um, so that will help to offset uh offset um some of the costs, so that that would be awash. So it's a pretty reasonable assumption. And then we've also netted out the borrowing that's not related to something that needs to happen for the uh for the pension uh strategy. Um, so really, just looking at um, you know, net-net savings in um in terms of pensions. And then uh again, we're based on a twenty twenty-one actuarial report uh with the valuation date of June thirty, twenty twenty. That's the most recent information, uh official information available from culprits. Anything that has happened since then is speculation, and there's very little guidance from culprits in terms of how those things will uh play out. So we're going by uh the information that we currently have, that's official, that's set in place, that we can calculate. Next slide please. So here we have two graphs showing you the fifteen-year uh and the twenty-year options. And the fifteen-year option is pretty straightforward. It's the same payment um every year for fifteen years, okay? And the fifteen year option is pretty straightforward. It's the same payment um, every year for fifteen years. Okay? The twenty year graph is even though we call it twenty year term, in reality, it's um, uh, it goes for about fifteen years and then it drops down and follows or actually um, it it goes for about thirteen years and then starts dropping down and following the downward curve of Calpers payments. So um, just like um, in the comprehensive strategy discussion, there was very strong comments from uh, you know, from the council that the city doesn't want to ever pay more than you would have to pay under the Calpers assumption. So it's really the twenty year scenario follows the UL uh, payment curve downward. Um, so you only have the first set payment for the first um, roughly thirteen years and then it starts going down. So the red line or the vertical blue bars are the UL payments. That's what you would have had to pay to Calpers if you did nothing. All right? The colored lines are the three scenarios, the were the three options. The red line is the First Foundation Bank, the green line is Uncle Bank, and um, the blue line is the indicative public offering as of um, October twenty eighth. All right, so you can see that the three lines, when you actually overlay them, they look very, very similar to each other. There is not a whole lot of difference in annual payments. They're they're pretty close. Um, the red line is below the green line, shows the uh, First Foundation Bank is um, more in most years a better option than Amquah in terms of payments. The blue line is below the red line indicating that the public markets uh, currently are pricing slightly better, uh, especially in the fifteen year scenario than um, than the bank market. On the twenty year scenario, there is very, very little difference between the two. So uh, that's the visual representation. Uh, next slide please. And now let's talk about how much the the city can save from implementing the strategy. So and the strategy is even though the total borrowing is about uh, twelve point eight million dollars, we're talking about just the nine million dollars of that twelve million dollar borrowing. Um, only what's necessary to implement the pension strategy. Right? So with the First Foundation Bank, on the fifteen years, the total savings are about four million dollars, four point one million dollars. On the twenty years, there's about three point six million dollars. So about four hundred thousand dollar difference between the fifteen and the twenty year um, uh, options with First Foundation Bank. Uh, Uncle Bank, fifteen years, three point nine, so about two hundred thousand dollars less than First Foundation. Um, uh, twenty year um, is about three point four million dollars. Again, about a quarter of a million dollars less in savings um, than First Foundation. And then the public markets, they have the best savings, about four point three million dollars on the fifteen year option and about a three point eight um, million dollars on a twenty year option. The most attractive, again, most volatile, this is as of the valuation date. We would not know the actual result for three to four months. So that's the overall savings. Okay, next slide please. And this is how those overall savings happen in different periods of time. So we're looking at three different slices of time, the first ten years, then years eleven through fifteen, and then years sixteen through twenty five. All right, so with First Foundation, you look at the fifteen and twenty year options in the first ten years. So your total savings in the first ten years under the fifteen year option are about one point two million dollars. Where with the twenty year option, your savings are much greater, um, one point nine million dollars. And then if you look at the backend, years sixteen through twenty five, with a fifteen year option, you're saving two and a half million dollars. So the bulk of the savings, more than half of the savings, total savings are happening after year sixteen. Where with a twenty year option, uh, the the backend savings are only about seven hundred thousand dollars. So you're saving much more in the first fifteen years than in the last ten years. Um, you know, with the uh, with a twenty year option. So that's, that's the balancing act. Uh, do you want slightly higher payment? Um, and greater overall savings, but you have to wait for those savings later. That's your fifteen year option. Or a slightly lower payment for the first few years, uh, but greater overall cash flow savings uh, in the first fifteen years and then smaller savings on the backend. So very similar situation happening with Uncle Bank and with the public markets. Again, with the uh, with the fifteen year options, um, your earlier savings are smaller. With the twenty year options, your earlier savings are larger uh, and the other way around on the backend. Next slide please. So that concludes our analysis and our and our presentation. Um, and we can go back to any slides that you would like and answer any questions you may have. Um, or uh, before questions, Angela, do you, do you want to um, to provide some some additional in uh, in uh, input?
A- a- absolutely. So just, uh, I know it was a lot of information and we found ourselves just as staff trying to really identify the pros and cons of each of the proposals and the financing strategies, what uh, assets are in play, whether it's uh, the cash flow management, savings now versus later. Um, and all of this is included within the staff report. Uh, and for anyone in the public, it's packet page two oh six. There's a lot of detailed information in there as well, which is uh, very complimentary to the presentation. So really, when staff analyze this at this point, we believe that really, uh, as Mike iterated earlier, private placement offers that security and the most benefit for us currently. It's that bird in the hand, you know? Uh, this is what we have and the volatility and the uh, significant uh, ability of the public markets rates to just increase, especially, you know, overnight, but then especially over the next three, four months, as he said. Um, so then in taking a step then digging down uh, and comparing the private placement, uh, we did the analysis comparing First Foundation and the Amquas. We went through here and really what was gonna fit Cotati the best. And we feel like First Foundation's twenty year program was really a better uh, rate. It offered still the cash flow savings for cash flow management. Um, it provides uh, a lot more of the additional security and cash flows. We can make these match as Mike and Dimitri stated by depositing additional funds with Amquah. But those are cash funds that are then inaccessible to us as opposed to um, having an asset on hand, which would be approximately the same insurance value as the cash that we would have to deposit. Uh, and and that trade off of having cash in hand that could be accruing a better interest in the one fifteen trust or even our bond call fund. Um, as opposed to an asset that Dimitri and Mike can reiterate, these have never been actually uh, forfeited or taken over by banks. They don't actually want them. It's just a tick the box for their agreements that they want something, additional security on their plate. And so the risk to benefit for that with the First Foundation, we feel like is is more prudent um, and a best use of funds for the city. So with that, that's where we came to our recommendation to council for the twenty year um, offer being provided by First Foundations. But we absolutely, again, would like uh, to discuss this further and get your input at this time.
Thank you, Angela. Uh, thank you, Dimitri. Thank you, Mike. Um, thank you for the presentation on that. I will open it up to council. Looks like uh, Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. I have um, five questions. I know that's a lot, but I think it's important to have them in public because it's such a big decision. Um, I'll do the fast ones first. Um, one, the the difference in, can you explain if there's any difference in the partial repayment between First Foundation and Amquah? Because on the table, it it had um, up to twenty percent written for Amquah, but it didn't specify that for First Foundation.
Mike, do you want to?
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is my caveat. That's a good point and I'm sorry, I I overlooked that. Amquah does provide an interesting uh, provision where you can prepay twenty percent of the loan every year without penalty. Um, so uh, their regular call provisions, I'll call them, um, have, you know, a a prepayment penalty, I think it's one oh two or one oh three, if you call in the first couple of years. But under their plan, uh, which is unique to them and isn't offered by First Foundation, so you can prepay uh, twenty percent of the loan each year for the first five years and be done with it with no prepayment penalty. And you would have to pay two to three percent if you did that w- with First Foundation.
Okay, so First Foundation, uh, there, I I feel like someone said up to ten, up to ten percent, but that, but for First Foundation, that's, they don't offer that. It's just Amquah.
Yeah, is it ten percent? Yeah, yes. Uh, Amquah uh, offers that. First Foundation does not.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, I I thought First Foundation did have a uh, ten percent provision. No?
Amquah only. First Foundation does not.
Oh, okay. I I apologize.
Okay, thank you. Um, second question was um, on the twenty year term with the interesting amortization um, schedule, what would happen if we made substantial prepayments um, to that schedule? Would it sort of come down equally across all the years or would it terminate sooner or how would that work?
In the bank world, um, go ahead, Mike.
No, go ahead, Dimitri.
Okay, in the bank world, what banks like to see is um, if there is a an extra payment that's made, um, they will act very similarly to what your mortgage lender would do. They would take it and apply it against the backend of the payments. So your, it will not reduce your early payments, but it will shorten the term of your repayment. So the last payments, the the last principal portion of the payments will go away. Um, and your front payments um, will will stay the same, but more of them will go to the principal.
Thank you. Um, another question, if the um, is the deposit interest rate um, included in the Amquah analysis? Like if if we have millions of dollars on deposit with them, it reduces our interest rate? I assume that we're not, that wasn't included in the analysis.
No, it was not included.
Okay.
But it's um, as Angela um, pointed out, to equalize, it would be about four million dollars. And those four million dollars would have to be maintained with Uncle Bank um, to keep that rate. So as soon as you take those deposits out, the rate will go back up.
Okay, thank you. Um, two more questions. One was the, uh, I was looking at the present value savings on packet page two twenty eight for the public offering, um, which was the highest present value out of all of the options at uh, three point two million dollars. Um, I wonder.
Or are you frozen up for a minute? So we'll give it a minute or to see if it comes back.
Well, uh, off the top of your head, swing. Am I back? Can you hear me?
You're back now.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. I could hear you all perfectly. Sorry. Um, question was, did you hear me mention the present value savings or did I cut out before that? Okay, so question was um, in the public offering, three point two million dollar public value savings figure, if there was a point one percent interest rate swing by the time we were able to lock in the interest rate, do you have any idea rough, like ballpark estimate of how much that would change the present value savings?
Yeah, yeah, this, this is my caveat. You cut out a little bit, but the difference, and this is the difference between the First Foundation twenty year bid and the public offering twenty year bid is ten basis points. So a bad day in the public market, you know, would would swing to the favor of the placements. Uh, granted, given all these variables we have in front of us.
Great, thank you. And can you hear me? Am I coming through? Okay, I'll try to save my last one really fast. Um, if we put up the streets as a collateral, not that we're going to default, but if we were to default, what would happen for a public placement versus a private placement?
Uh, u- u- under both scenarios, it's the same. Um, you uh, the the asset could not, they can't take possession of it. Uh, what they would do is they would sue you, you promising the full faith and credit to make a payment. And what they would have to do is sue you in court to get you to pay, is what it would come down to.
I thank you for your patience with my bad internet. Sorry.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparks, Councilmember Ford.
To clarify, um, on on the um, on the need for collateral, um, really that discussion uh, becomes much more important in the light of what happened in Stockton and San Bernardino, where a lot of lenders and a lot of creditors are looking for ways to to get a secured status uh, for their financing. Um, and that's why a s- a street asset, um, you know, um, when streets are pledged, it gives the creditor in the bankruptcy proceedings, the status of a secured creditor. At the same time, it's the type of collateral that um, you know, really cannot be taken over. So it's, it's the best of both worlds, but really the 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 key item in in this collateral discussion is um, banks um, in in the bankruptcy proceedings or banks or bondholders. Um, if they have some form of collateral, they're usually treated much more favor- favorably than unsecured creditors. So that's why they want something. And usually the more essential the collateral, uh, the better the treatment in the bankruptcy court.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford.
Thanks. Um, thanks for the information in the clear staff report. A couple of questions about it. There's um, on packet page two oh five and in the slides, the the tables with the green bars, there are the the drawdown provisions seem to be different between the two banks, but then they're the same on the following page in the staff report. So I just want to be clear, uh, Amquah Bank lists a twelve month limit to the drawdown provision, whereas First Foundation doesn't list a limit on the slides, but they're both listed as a twelve month provision on the next page. I'm just questioning whether there is actually a difference between them.
They they both have suggested twelve year max, or excuse me, twelve months, sorry, twelve month max. So they're both the same.
Wait, you said twelve years. I want twelve years. Okay.
Uh, yeah, twelve, twelve months, twelve months is what they said.
Okay, so no difference there. Um, the second was on the the calculation um, in the staff report that for the fifteen year term, we'd have to have three million on deposit at Amquah to make the interest rates um, match. But on the twenty year loan, we'd need five million on deposit. But that doesn't quite square with the, like the Amquah Bank, the Amquah interest rates are um, you know, point three three and point four four for the two different types of loan, um, more than First Foundation. So that would be covered by three million on, or or is it like you need three million to lower the terms of the tax exempt um, loan and another two million to lower the terms of the taxable? Like are those separate deposits we have to have to lower the interest rates?
Yes, they are separate. So uh, one million deposit, a two million deposit lowers both the tax exempt and taxable each point one five percent. So to lower both point three percent, you would need four million dollars.
Got it. Okay, thanks. That's it.
Councilmember Harvey.
I just have one question and it's probably for Angela. Angela, um, what, if any, are your thoughts on what essential asset were you considering for um, the first, first federal, First Foundation Bank?
Um, so we're currently reviewing our assets. We have them all. And so this is insured value. And so we are uh, working on pieces of that to see what we would use as an essential asset as collateral. Um, we are currently not looking at either our police department or our city hall, uh, even our civic center. Those would not be considered. So we are looking at other um, tangible property within the city um, that would give that valuation.
Okay.
And and Councilmember Harvey, I think specifically the suggestion of a fire station sounded like a good one for.
I know, yeah, too bad, huh? Maybe, maybe that would work. We could suggest that to the fire department, huh? Yeah, um, originally, I know we were pushing a lot, you know, towards the fifteen, but in looking um, at the way the numbers go down and the savings are more loaded up front, I see why you are leaning in that direction, especially in the graphs where it, um, as Dimitri pointed out, it kind of follows the line rather than in the fifteen year one, we just kind of drop off. And then then um, we're we're kind of already paid up and we don't really know what will happen, you know, in that last ten years. So that makes much more sense to me now. So thank you for those um, explanations.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lemon.
Yes, so I I I kind of came from the same place as Councilmember Harvey. I was.
I was leaning initially in our earlier discussions towards a 15-year. But I do see the value, not so much as front-loading savings, but more of smoothing over costs, if you will, over time to be more protective from volatility. Because I think if there's anything we've learned in the last few years is anything can happen and has happened and will happen, and things are volatile. So I'm comfortable with that. The thing that I had some nervousness about, at least in reading this, was the essential asset requirement. Just left me with a vague disquiet. And I feel a little better hearing everybody discuss this. And I just want to confirm. My understanding is that this is more of securing a status as a secured creditor. The remedy, if the unlikely event needed to be used, would be to sue us in court for a full payment of what we owe. And it's more of ticking a box, as Ms. Quarter said, rather than taking something over. I want to confirm, this is essentially the bulk of it. Is there any other way this can go sideways? Are there any other potential directions this could be? Or is that actually some what having an essential asset pledged means? Is that all of it?
This is Mike Kavanaugh. I just want to clarify. It was me who mentioned that I was discussing the streets only. The streets would be something a creditor could not take possession of. So what they want to do, they want, or First Foundation wants you to pledge another asset, something that they could take control, something that it would hurt the city or the city would be very discouraged not to make a payment. Whereas if you didn't pay on the streets only, it's not that the bank would come after and repossess your streets, right? They want to hold something over your head. If they want an extra hammer, is really what they want in the negotiation, to make sure you make a payment. So I just want to clarify, streets only, they can't take possession of them. Streets an essential asset? That essential asset is, yeah, if you don't pay, they're going to take that from you.
And to explain something, to clarify, the legal recourse that a lender has with an asset that they can't take possession of is they have a legal right to evict you from the asset and lease the asset to someone else, only for the duration of the lease term, and usually there is an additional 10 years thereafter, to recoup the money that they are not getting from you. After that lease term plus the 10 years is up, the asset reverts back to the city. Okay, that's the legal right of the lender in that situation. In practical reality, this has not happened. The only time where a lender took possession of an asset was in Stockton with a parking garage. And parking garage had meters, and there was revenue coming in. So the lenders took over the parking garage to immediately start generating revenue. From the standpoint of, you know, evicting a public agency from their facilities, it really is not, you know, there's not any well-known precedent for that. Most of the time, I mean, there's a lot of publicity risk. There's a reason why a lot of...
You may think that was on my mind, yes.
Yeah. There's a lot of reasons why banks usually shy away from financing churches and schools is because usually, you know, if you throw away a congregation or little kids, you know, you end up on the front page of a newspaper. So, you know, there's a lot of publicity risk in evicting, you know, a visible tenant like this. So in practical reality, the reason why a bank wants an essential asset is because unless they have it, they don't really have a hammer to get you back to the table and figure out a solution. So from the practical standpoint, you know, if you're unable to make a payment, the bank will say, listen, let's have a conversation. What would it take for you to make things work? Whether it's extension of the term, you know, deferment, deferral of several payments, something like this. Without an asset, they don't have a way to get you to the table. So that's the practical application. By right, they do have the right to evict you from the facility for a time period. From a reality standpoint, it's such an unfavorable action to take. Most likely, that would not be taken. But there will be a negotiation to change the terms of the transaction.
Well, I would certainly expect a negotiation, obviously. And I understand, it makes sense to me that if it is a piece of infrastructure that's generating funds, that may be something they'd wish to take. So I don't know if we'll put ourselves in that situation. I don't see that happening. Nevertheless, you're right. I was picturing in some years' future unexpectedly seeing a headline in the Press Democrat talking about Roman Park leasing from the bank, our city hall, just for fun. And I really didn't want to see that. So let me bounce this back to staff. And it sounds like this is a very low risk, but run it through for the council again, why this smoothed over and having just a little more flexibility on cash outflows is worth even taking the small risk of being in a situation like that.
Well, Angela, I can maybe give anything to add to it, jump in. So, you know, when we were evaluating the essential asset provision, I will say that when we come back, we would have a recommendation for what that might be, even though we don't have it tonight. Although generally, the philosophy that we're going with is that we really don't want to, you know, use anything as collateral that is something that we actually need to operate, like city hall, or I mean, that's why Angela said, I think, to the question earlier, it wouldn't be city hall or the police station. So we'd be looking at some other ancillary facility that, you know, that wouldn't be...
A courtyard that has land value or something?
Potentially. I mean, things that wouldn't disrupt our operation, right? So we're in the process of looking at those options. And we think we can find it. That's why, I think that's why we ended up with the recommendation. But in combination with, just in conversations with Mike and Dimitri, the reality is that it's more of a, you know, collateralized lender-type thing if the city were in some bankruptcy proceeding, or, you know, the risk of actual repossession is, well, I mean, it wouldn't be. It would be, you know, taking it over and leasing it out, or trying to get revenue off of it for some period.
Well, I imagine if we're in a world where that happens, every community would be in various forms of serious problems. So that's helpful. I appreciate the discussion. I recognize and appreciate that was just an exhaustive and very good staff and guest staff packet presented to us. But still, there's a lot of things. You can't fit everything in there. So I'm glad we took the time to go through this with a little more detail. Thank you.
I would, this is Mike Kavanaugh. I would like to add, councilmember, if it's fairly very, I'll say it's very common for cities to enter into leases with essential assets, police stations, fire stations, city halls are really the top ones. And I would be surprised if 50% of the cities in California didn't have a lead, well, maybe 50% high. But at least a quarter of the cities in California have an essential asset pledged on a debt financing.
Well, if you can figure out a way to make it the fire district station or perhaps the city hall from another community, preferably in another county, so I don't upset my friends, I'm all for it. But other than that, that does concern me. Thank you for taking time to explain that.
Yes, sir.
Am I going to weigh in on this a little bit? I know that the better financing is with collateral. And in the sense that it's streets, I suppose you could have a worst-case scenario where they could come in and put tolls on the streets. And that would be for a way to recoup. But then, and when you talk about streets, are we talking all the streets in Katani?
It would be all the streets, yes.
Really?
And they could not put tolls on your streets. They have no recourse to repossess your streets. There is no recourse to them to take possession of your streets.
But if they repossessed a parking garage in Stockton that had meters in there, what would preclude them from putting tolls on the roads? Or at least the main roads coming in?
We wouldn't allow them, and, you know, we'd learn from what Stockton did. But that's a prerequisite to bidding. That was in the bid package. We did a public offering earlier this year with all of this language. There's been a handful of deals done in California this year that have pledged just the streets. And in all cases, they are not able to take possession of them. And it's, there's legal, you know, I can get into some legalese here that I don't have in front of me, but I'm happy to share that with staff on the side.
That would be great. Okay.
And the difference with Stockton is the garage was an operating enterprise. It was not something that the lender added to it. It was something that was pledged as an enterprise, as a revenue-generating enterprise, where the, you know, the city streets are not. So, and that's a very key difference.
Now, and I think if we were going to offer a real asset, some property, I would start with Discount Hut and go from there. The other issue I had is, what are the financial ratings between Umpqua and First Foundation?
I'm not sure that they have financial ratings. I haven't looked into that.
I looked at Umpqua, and they had a BBB plus with Fitch. And there are banking ratings that are available?
I've done business with each of these firms for a long time, and they've never not performed. If you think of it this way, is they're lending you money at, you know, you need to get them to the closing, which is in the next 60 days. After that, they've already lent you the money. It really doesn't matter their financial health at that point. But yes, there is a risk involved in between now and closing. What I'm saying to you as placement agent, I wouldn't solicit any banks that I thought wouldn't close. These two I have success rates with. I've never not had one close. But it's not to say it couldn't happen.
Mike, I'm not talking about the closing on the finance. I'm wondering what the credit ratings of the banks are.
Yes, sir. I don't know the credit rating of the bank.
The financial zones, yeah, okay.
I was, my point of that conversation, sorry to, was the fact that once they lend you the money, you don't have any more, there's no more risk to you, per se. You're just paying the loan back, right? They've already lent you the money. If they go insolvent after that, it doesn't affect you, unless I'm missing something. Sorry. Does that answer your question?
In a roundabout way, I suppose. I mean, it certainly doesn't lend a lot of security to the question. If those banks were to go insolvent for whatever reason, or the market crashed, then is it going to fall under the FDIC that we have our repayment plans with? You know, or does that negate our obligation to the bank? No, I don't think so, to whoever takes that over. So I think that's a kind of an important question in that regard. So I would like to see that information come forward to us. And then, in those two banks, Umpqua and First Foundation, First Foundation's only been around for, what, 10, 12 years?
Sounds about right.
And Umpqua's been around since 1938?
Umpqua's been around for a long time.
Right.
They've merged multiple times. They're actually in the middle of a merger right now with Columbia Bank up in Washington. That was announced about three, four weeks ago. First Foundation is a bank that was started by a group that sold their prior bank to Umpqua. And then they took the money from the transaction and started First Foundation. So it's, both are community banks. Umpqua is a larger bank. First Foundation is a smaller bank. Umpqua is a regional, based and headquartered in Oregon, and covering the entire West Coast, where First Foundation is mostly California. So those are the differentials. And on a prior point, if a bank fails and the FDIC takes over or another bank takes over, neither the FDIC nor the bank that takes over has the right to amend your terms. So once the transaction is executed, to kind of elaborate on what Mike was saying, you really don't have much risk in terms of your terms not being honored. Because it's a contract. And whoever takes over the failing bank has to abide by the contract that you have with a bank. They don't have, just because the bank failed, a new bank cannot change your terms. What's in your loan documents will stay until the loan is fully repaid.
Okay.
And if I can jump in real quick, I did just check. So Umpqua had an A-plus rating, and First Foundation was a single A rating.
Thank you. That certainly makes me feel a little bit better, especially when you look at there's multiple rating services out there. And Umpqua had a BBB plus, but that was with Fitch. Thank you very much for that information. You know, if there's no further questions at this point, I will open it up for a public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. Looking to our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raised hand icon or dial star nine. Mayor Moore, that will end the public comment.
Thank you very much. I'll bring it back to the council for further discussion and potential action. Oh, Mike, I did have one other question, if I may.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Or even Angela. You talked about the cost for the public placement of $200,000? I mean, for the private placement of $200,000. Is that for either or?
For either or bank? Yes. I think, Dimitri, the numbers are the same for each. The only thing that I think could change is the bank council fee, but I'm guessing they, I don't know if...
No, the bank council is the same. They're using Nixon, Nixon's people, both banks.
Then, yes, Mr. Mayor, the cost would be the same for both banks.
Okay, and then in the public, you wouldn't have that cost, correct?
The cost is a little more on a public offering because you had more parties involved. The rating agency would be involved, a disclosure council would be involved. So the cost is a little higher. And that was all included in our cash flows accounted for that higher cost of issuance.
It's about $75,000 higher with the public sale.
Okay. And on the placement, or in reference to really do our due diligence to our constituents, are there fees or commissions with either of the banks going to you guys? Or is this through the placement fees?
Yeah, just the placement agent fee. My fee is the same with either bank. I don't have any relationship with either of those banks where I get anything from either of them on any transaction ever I've done.
On every party that's involved in the financing, placement agent, municipal advisor, bond counsel, they're compensated by the city based on the contracts that have been executed. And there's absolutely no payments that are allowed by law to be made by the banks to any of the parties. So, yeah, there are no payments or commissions paid. There is no conflict of interest.
Okay, thank you. Just want to make sure that we got that covered. Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. I appreciate so much all of the details. Thank you so much to staff and to our guests. I appreciate and understand the reason that staff is recommending that we go with First Foundation, but my opinion is that we should go with Umpqua on the 20-year term. And here are the reasons that I think that. First of all, I want to look at the present value savings when I'm comparing how much we're going to save because it's really important that we look at, take inflation into account. So the difference between the two, First Foundation and Umpqua, based on the present value savings in page 226 to 231, is about $300,000 over the course of the 20 years. So that's significant. So to weigh against giving up that $300,000 in savings, there are two factors that come to me. First is, I don't feel comfortable putting up an essential city asset as collateral. If the last two years have taught me anything, it's that I cannot predict the future. And I just don't feel comfortable doing it. I would feel more comfortable if the savings was bigger, and I really could justify that. But I don't feel comfortable with it. And then, secondly, I really like the 20% partial repayment option that Umpqua has. It gives us, I feel like Umpqua gives us more flexibility in the front. Like if we suddenly come into more money and we want to prepay, we have more flexibility to do that. And it also gives us more security in the event that something goes horribly wrong, that we haven't put up the essential city asset. So I would go for Umpqua.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford.
Well, I was going to say, I'm comfortable with staff's recommendation. I would be willing to go either way, but I think the risk of the... I'm, I would be willing to go either way, but I think the risk of the collateral is very, very low and a risk that I'm comfortable taking. And the twenty percent prepayment during the first, I forget if it's seven or eight years on this one, is not, to me, a significant enough benefit. We can put that money into paying down any additional unfunded liabilities that come up or accelerating our streets program further. So I'm not, those two reasons aren't strong enough to swing me to Umpqua, but I would be comfortable with that if that's the direction majority wants to go.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lemon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I agree. Looking at Umpqua's twenty percent repayment, that sounds attractive. But I also noticed in the staff report and just from looking at our long-term plan with streets over the next five to seven years, we probably won't have a lot of extra dollars to put there. Granted, anything's possible. I agree with my colleague, Councilmember Sparks. One thing we've both learned in the last couple of years is anything's possible. Maybe it could actually be good for once and we run into extra money, but I don't know if that'll happen. So that discounts that somewhat for me. What I wanted to ask, and I do feel a little bit better about the essential asset requirement. I think it's more something that just sounds troubling than something that is likely to be troubling, and that's an important difference. I don't like it either way, but one I can live with, the other I don't want to live with. I wanted to ask, what would be the challenge, the difficulty for staff, for the city, if we decided we wanted to go with a fifteen-year with Umpqua to avoid even the question of an asset requirement and of paying extra interest? Number one, how would that impact us? And number two, if we don't, if we go with the twenty, with First Financial, are we planning, is the plan that in later years to draw that down, as was mentioned in the staff report, that we could do that to make those capital costs essentially very close by prepaying towards the principal? So two questions. Impact to us, how difficult would it be? Would it be challenging to go for that fifteen? Do we really need the extra comfort of twenty? And then the last thing I mentioned.
I'll start, Angela, feel free to jump in. But basically, I think when we were looking at it, the, at least with First Foundation, the fifteen versus twenty, the rates were not that different. So the thought was, why force yourself into a higher payment? And the prepayment provisions for both, for First Foundation, for the fifteen and twenty were the same. In other words, at year seven, you could prepay with zero penalty in either case. So it just seemed like that in combination with probably a pretty heavy infrastructure bill in the next five years, we probably won't be in a position to do much prepayment right away. And by the time we get to year seven, hopefully we'd be in a better position to start doing that, start paying it down. Ideally, we could start paying it down sooner than just taking it out for the full term. And the other thing, the fifteen versus twenty, was that, as was pointed out in the presentation, we were looking at doing another three, I think it was like three point six in borrowing for street work. And the evaluations were all about the nine million. In other words, to implement the pension funding policy. But we also had another three point six million out there that would be extra borrowing for streets. While we're in the process of doing this. And when we were looking at the fifteen-year term, if you look at the existing KELPERS UAL curves, you could essentially stack the pension payments. I'm sorry, when you look at the twenty-year term, you could stack the pension payments and the extra three point six million in street payments and still essentially be under the envelope of what the, I mean, there's years where it's not exactly the same, but essentially, you know, you could be in that KELPERS UAL envelope for overall payments. And in the fifteen-year, obviously you compress the time period. And then the pension, the pension strategy plus the streets borrowing at that same fifteen-year term would just have more of an impact on cash flow because we would have, the combination of those payments would be more than our current pension schedule payments.
Well, I guess it comes down to if I'm an optimist or a pessimist in terms of what the future holds. And I like to think I'm an optimist, but if I'm betting financially, I'll assume the worst so I can prepare prudently. So perhaps there's value in what you're suggesting. Thank you.
If I can just chime in really quick, is it exactly what Deanian explained? Is then that also gives us cash flow? So if we do not, if we can be a little bit pessimistic and say, okay, we're going to have inflation, other costs are going to go up, then that allows us that extra cushion within our standard regular operating budget to alleviate some of that additional balance over the next years. And then maybe as things re-equalize again, or we have other means to find additional funding, like this additional streets funding we have, hopefully we can go out and get additional grants because we'll have the cash flow available for matching grants that are now available through federal funds and everything else as well, that that can better alleviate some of those maybe potential future operating cost increases if we can stretch out this payment a little bit longer.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you, Angela.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yeah, to help Vice Mayor a little bit, I think what struck me was if you look on page two twenty-four, the whole cash flow savings. That's the part that kind of struck me is that we really wouldn't, with a fifteen-year, we wouldn't really see the cash flow savings until year sixteen through twenty-five after the loan is paid off. So whereas in the twenty-year, we have more cash flow to be able to utilize, to be able to do other things with it. So that's kind of what struck me on that and it was, you know, big numbers that struck me on that. Because originally I was where you were at, you know, wanting to, you know, get done as early as possible. But it does then tie up all of our cash and it doesn't allow us to do much else, but to make those payments. Well, yeah, and I'm a little torn on the, you know, I like staff's recommendation. For sure, the twenty-year, I'm not yet convinced that I would want to change the recommendation on the bank. It didn't, the argument didn't sway me very much. And I'm not saying that I wouldn't go that way, but I wasn't swayed by that argument. So that's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford.
Just wanted to weigh in on the fifteen versus twenty because that arose after I spoke before. And I'm, I think the smoothing out the savings over the twenty years and giving us a little more of it on the early half makes sense. So I do support the staff's twenty-year recommendation. And I think, I agree with Councilmember Sparks that the present value numbers, even though they have a lot of assumptions in them about what future inflation is going to be, are the most, you know, our best guesses as to how to compare. And those are, as I understand it, on page two twenty-nine and two thirty of the packet are the two twenty-year, yeah, First Foundation, Umpqua. And the total line in that last column, present value savings, it's a little less than four hundred thousand dollars savings. So that doesn't sound like much when we're talking about ten million dollars. But if we, this is essentially equivalent to, somebody gives us a choice right now. Do we pay four hundred thousand dollars for the comfort of not listing an essential asset as collateral on a loan? And for an option to pay back in the first seven years, which, and so my take is that the risk of the essential asset is very low and not worth anywhere near four hundred thousand or even three hundred thousand. And that the likelihood of us even being in a position to want to prepay in the first seven years is fairly low. So I would take the lower cost and go with the staff assessment.
So you would think First Foundation at twenty years?
Right.
With the secured asset, with the collateral.
Right. Through the mayor, if I might?
Certainly.
Since Councilmember Ford is sitting in front of City Hall and is still comfortable to say this, if that was a motion, I'd be happy to second it.
Yes, I don't have.
I would like to weigh in on this before you do.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just for discussion's sake, obviously, we can certainly still talk more, but yeah.
You know, I like the twenty-year option. It gives us greater flexibility in case the fit hits the shan. Because we never know what's going to happen in retail around the road, brick and mortar, things like that. Inflation, all those variables that we don't have, merely speculation at this point. And hopefully they'll follow trends, things like that. And I like the Umpqua, even though there might be a greater cost, because I think it's more secure and it's got a greater, longer history of being around. I have seen institutions come and go. As we've known, we've seen old Capital, not Capital One, but some of the other mortgage institutions that were, you know, everybody was raving about it, next thing you know, they're gone, or gobbled up by somebody else. And I know that may not have a bearing, but, you know. So my suggestion would be to agree with Councilmember Sparks and the twenty-year Umpqua and not tie up the additional assets if we don't have to. So it's back at you, Vice Mayor Lemon.
If I can just jump in real quick, Mayor Moore. We currently actually have, like Mike reminded us, two different bonds. And they've actually just been, those banks still hold those bonds, but they're managed by another bank. That bank has dissolved that group that managed those bonds for us and has moved it to a new bank. So they've dissolved those and moved them over and we're under audit right now and it has been seamless. They actually moved over all of the staff as well to that new, under the new bank with all of those assets that were transferred over. So if that alleviates any of that concern about that as well, I just wanted to point that out, that we do have that interaction and do have that risk currently. And it seems to have gone fine.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I have had a mortgage with a bank that went bust. And no issue to, the risk is to people who buy the mortgages, not to the people who take out the mortgages on their properties. So I'm not worried about the issue of, you know, an FDIC A-rated bank versus a A-plus rated bank for the issuer of the loan.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey.
I guess I want to ask another question about Umpqua Bank. And that is, are we, will we be required to have that deposit or only if we want to buy down the interest rate?
Only if you want to buy down the interest rate.
So I guess my question is back to you, Mayor Moore and Councilmember Sparks. Are you suggesting that we tie up four million dollars to bring that rate down? Or are you accepting the higher rates in your proposal?
Well, if we were to put a partial on there, would you get a partial discount on those rates? And as the, as the loans were paid down, would you still need to maintain that deposit ratio?
Yes, the million dollars would lower one of the loans by fifteen basis points or point one five percent. So two million dollars would lower on both, both the loans by point two, excuse me, point, excuse me, point one five percent. And that money would have to be there for the duration of the loan, is how it was explained to me by the bank.
Regardless of.
A long time.
Regardless of the balance of the loan remaining.
Yeah, I would think if you get down to a million dollars or two million dollars, you would just use it to pay off the loan. But yes, that's how it was explained to me.
And if you, it's not the case that you could withdraw it and the interest rates would revert back to higher? You just would not be permitted to withdraw it?
That's how it would work. If you withdraw it, the interest rate would go back up.
So you could pull it out if you had an emergency. It would just increase your financing costs?
That's correct. And just one more point out, and I mentioned earlier, the current interest bearing on that account is point zero three percent. So essentially you aren't earning anything in that investment, just to point that out.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Vice Mayor Lemon.
Yeah, interesting. I think you made some good points, Mr. Mayor. I was considering pretty strongly, but Councilmember Harvey does make a good point. With the degree of finance that we'd have to put into this to derive any value from it, given the fact it would have to be there for the duration, it would earn little interest. Even with the benefit that we could remove it and then revert back to the higher rate, I'm not sure if it sells me. I do know I don't see a big difference between FFB and Umpqua simply because I'm not going to call myself a homeowner and the bank actually owns it, but I've been making payments, my wife and I for thirty-three years. We've seen the names on who owns that loan change multiple times. That has no bearing whatsoever on us or our loan, so I'm not terribly concerned. I heard, I believe, one of our presenters mentioned that Umpqua is in the middle of either taking somebody over or being taken over by somebody, a merger, I guess we're just going to call it, as we speak. So I think it's good to consider those two things. I'm not sure if anything jumps out that really moves. You know, I think that it takes me back to the staff recommendation ever so slightly, unless I'm missing something. I'm open to one more round of suggestions on this, but unless there's something new, I think I lean that way still. But obviously it could work either way.
Thank you. It's kind of funny, you know, these numbers and the ownership of these numbers, it's a really interesting relationship here. It's like, okay, we want to make sure that we're doing the right thing here. Councilmember Ford.
Thanks. Your earlier remarks made me, made me think that there is kind of a middle solution here. So the staff report on the fifteen-year term recommended Umpqua with a three million dollar deposit to pay the interest rate down to the equivalent of first, whatever it is. And the, making the argument that we're required to hold a two million dollar reserve that's, you know, liquid and we can't touch. So at least two million, we just have to park at the bank somewhere anyway. So if we use three million to pay down the rate on a twenty-year loan, that would not get the interest rate quite down to what it is at First Federal, but it would get, you know, pretty close. And so that might, you know, if we were paying down that way, we'd be bringing it down three quarters of the difference. So the cost then for going with Umpqua versus First Federal in present value would be less than a hundred thousand dollars. And if that provides some more comfort for people who are worried about the risk of the the essential asset as collateral, then I would be willing to go that way. I'm not so keen on the four hundred thousand dollar present value cost.
And then the only consideration on that is you lose the flexibility of the cash flow with the fifteen versus the twenty.
Yeah, if I can jump in.
No, 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 I'm proposing twenty-year term. Twenty-year term, not fifteen, but using the strategy that the staff report recommended, if we did go with the fifteen-year term of parking three million in the bank, which isn't enough to pay the Umpqua rate all the way down to the First Federal rate, but it's almost there. And that was an amount that staff was comfortable parking in the, in the staff report talking about the fifteen-year term loan. So I'm not proposing going fifteen. I'm still on a twenty-year term. And I'm proposing a way we could go with Umpqua without the full four hundred thousand dollar current value cost.
If I could jump in real quick, I think then we would have to take into consideration the opportunity cost of not earning possibly the six percent interest or something in a one fifteen trust or even an interest rate in our, in our regular CDs. So that would be maybe something that's missing from just that component, but.
Well, but you said we had, in the staff report, that at least two million can't be in the one fifteen trust. It has to be parked somewhere completely liquid as a.
Correct. If we don't put up a secure asset, so comparing, and maybe I'm understanding incorrectly, comparing putting up an essential asset versus putting cash down.
The question is about where can, where does the reserve, where does a two million reserve have to be? Like, does the two million reserve, can the two million dollar reserve required to hold be in a one fifteen trust?
I I the the required operating reserve has to be liquid.
And would putting it in Umpqua be liquid enough?
Well, I I say it has to be liquid just because, you know, if if everything goes south, you want to be able to access it and not be restricted in your access of it.
Don't they want it deposited with them?
Yeah, it has to be deposited with them.
Yeah, so we can't put it in the trust. It's it's basically, you know, it it's kind of like at your own personal bank. If you have so much money there, you get, you know, discounts on things. Um,
Yeah, I
You can't really go below that or they start charging you. So I think that
The yeah, the perspective, the the perspective in this staff report was like that would be equivalent to just holding it at life or something. Um, which doesn't really earn much interest either. It's maybe slightly better than Umpqua, but not much. It's it's far under one percent.
Um, I I feel like we're talking past each other a little bit and I just want to make sure we're on the same page. What I'm understanding the question is uh, the Councilmember Ford's suggestion was that we take two million dollars or three million, but let's just start with two, the two million dollar reserve that we're required to have liquid and put that on deposit with Umpqua. And that and then I believe he was saying that it's not a fair comparison to compare what that two million is making now with what it could make in a trust since it can't go in the trust anyway. Is that what I was under? Is that correct, Councilmember Ford? Right. So could we? My question then is, could our two million dollar reserve requirement be met by placing that two million on deposit with Umpqua?
Yes, yes, it could. I believe that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, before I take any more questions, I may I may be able to indulge me for a moment, Vice Mayor Lemon. Um, I may be able to put an end to this. I'm not willing to die on a sword over Umpqua. So if you think it's a better deal and you want to go with the staff recommendation and First Foundation, I can live with that. Vice Mayor Lemon?
Well, I'm pleased to hear that because no amount of discussion is worth anybody dying on swords for this issue tonight. But what I was going to ask, so so I think that our consultants, Dimitri and Mike, have heard what council members put forward, and I think it's an intriguing notion that uh we won't completely cover the gap of extra cost by putting in the two million that we can afford to put on deposit that we agreed for fifteen years, we could do with Umpqua. But to go to the extra four million, that would be difficult. It would lock up too much according to what we're hearing. But what he's recommending is something in between. So I guess, and then we've discussed, well, how does that work out in terms of interest we lose? You know, we've discussed this a bit. We've heard a little from staff. Dimitri and Mike, you've both heard what we're kicking around. Could you give us the quick condensed pluses and minuses from your perspective?
Well, I'll I'll start uh start and then turn it over to Mike. Um, just like what Mike is experiencing and observing in the markets is it's really hard to predict what the interest rates will be doing. Right? So right now, the value of deposits in a savings account is not that much because no one's paying much interest. Um, you know, it's, you know, uh, Umpqua's account is paying three hundredths of a percent. Um, you know, with inflation, who knows where inflation inflation is, three, four percent. Um, you know, two percent, depending on who you ask, you know, three hundredths of a percent um really doesn't doesn't move needle. Um, what is important to understand about uh thinking about the deposits is right now at the beginning of the transaction, when you have twelve million dollars on the line, um, that, you know, tho- those deposits are leveraging pretty well in reducing the uh, you know, the interest rate. So um, for, you know, two million dollars, uh, you were getting, you know, one point five percent reduction off of twelve million dollars in debt. Um, it's a pretty sizable um leveraging of deposits. Um, however, as the loans are repaid over the years, the value of that uh will become smaller and smaller. Uh, and then who knows where the interest rates will be. Um, you know, maybe the the markets will um, you know, the the market rates will go up and you'll be able to redeploy those deposits and investment at higher interest rates elsewhere. Um, so the beauty of of that arrangement is you don't um, you don't have to keep the deposits for two million, uh, you know, for for the entire, you know, fifteen or twenty years. Um, as long as you have the money in there, you're enjoying the the lower interest rate. If you revisit it after a couple of years and you say, you know, um, you know, we have different priorities now. You can take the deposits out, um, and you start paying slightly higher interest rate. Um, but if that discussion happens ten or, you know, twelve years down the road, you know, you don't have twelve million dollars outstanding anymore. You know, now you're down to, I don't know, six, seven, eight million dollars. So the value, the incremental value of keeping the rate down is smaller than in the beginning. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So um, you know, it's it's a flexible arrangement. You can you can always change your mind and your rate, you know, the the price will be fifteen uh, you know, fifteen basis points uh for taking two million dollars out from Umpqua Bank. So that's uh, um, you know, tha- that would be the thinking. Is uh, you you're not making a decision for two decades. It's a decision that uh you're making now that, you know, later on you can reevaluate.
And this is Mike Calvin.
Go ahead, Mike.
So, yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt. Uh, thank you. Um, I I was gonna add, uh, I came at it from a different direction, uh, and and um I don't have very many clients that want to put money up with a bank uh, to buy the rate down. That is, I I have not had many issuer clients do that. But as uh Dimitri uh pointed out to me, it's an interesting study, right? And tha- that's why we're having this discussion is you can put up a four million dollar asset, essential asset, or you can put up four million dollars in cash. You know, what is, m- most of my clients are are more comfortable with the asset, but it's a great argument about the cash and what Dimitri just said, I can't agree more, is you could do it, and if it doesn't work out, you have the flexibility to undo it.
And Mike, what's the value of the asset that we would be required to put up with First Foundation?
He he explained it as, you know, it needs to be some something of significance. I said, what does that mean, right? He I I think four million to six million, I think you can get away with something four million i- if it's if it's a a part, you know, they may want six million. If it's something that struck has a structure and more essential, you know, they may only allow, they may uh uh only go down to four million. I think four million's the minimum that they they would want. An insured value of four million dollars is kind of wh- what we had talked about with the bank or what I had talked about with the bank.
Councilmember Ford?
Uh, one quick follow up question. Mike mentioned um four million asset versus four million on deposit. But but they, so the four million on deposit is not securing the loan, right? That's very different to have four million sitting in a bank account versus four million that the bank can seize.
Very true. Yes, sir. Very true. That is very true statement.
Okay, thanks. Um, Mayor Moore, if I if I might, I'd like to make a motion.
Absolutely.
Um, I I feel that we've talked about the options enough and I'd like to move that uh the council approved the staff report to go with the twenty year term with First Foundation Bank.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I would second that motion.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or have we beat this up enough?
For months.
Councilmember Sparks?
I I I I'm going to vote no, but I'm broadly supportive of this whole endeavor. It's just that I really don't feel comfortable voting to put the uh es- uh essential asset up, but I'm supportive of everything else in the twenty years and every
So um, Ms. Burgess, if you kindly give us a roll call, please?
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
No.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lemon?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, uh, Mike and Dimitri and especially Angela for your patience. Uh, sometimes that's what we need to do to to reach a consensus.
Thank you.
Then I'm sure we'll look, we'll be seeing the agreements on the assets and what you're putting up for that before the city signs off on those.
Yep, the next step will be um to uh the staff will execute the term sheet from um from the selected bank. And uh Cameron Weest with uh Weest Law uh will prepare the documentation. And that documentation will be brought to you probably on a December uh, is it December fourteenth, Angela? Uh, on the December fourteenth meeting um for your review and uh and approval. Uh, and really until the transaction closes, um, you know, it's it's not something that um is irreversible.
Yeah, we haven't signed on the dotted line yet.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you very much. It is, it is nine oh six. No, I know you just came on. Sorry about that. Uh, we're gonna do a uh, uh, it's nine oh seven. We're gonna do a um five, six, seven minute break, which is a bio break, and then we'll come back at um nine fourteen, nine fifteen. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. It looks like we have almost everybody back. So we will reconvene at nine sixteen and move on to regular item eleven C, request for two hundred fifty thousand in affordable housing funds to support the renovation of the twenty eight unit Wynwood apartment complex by Burbank Housing to preserve these homes as affordable housing. And I believe this is your presentation, Mr. House.
For council. Yes, as identified, we are sticking with the financial theme and discussion your requests for some funds. And thank you, Lauren, for bringing up my brief PowerPoint. If we go to the next slide, and I apologize, there's a typo on the date there. It's November ninth. There we go. So as identified by the mayor, it's a request for two hundred fifty thousand dollars in affordable housing funds to support renovation of the twenty eight unit Wynwood apartment project by Burbank Housing, who has recently acquired the project. And in exchange for this funding, Burbank would agree to a new affordable housing agreement or affordability agreement for a fifty year term. We'll go to the next slide. And Laura, if you advance it one more time, it'll highlight the property. Twenty eight units. It's actually a pretty nice existing development that was built in nineteen eighty one, as mentioned, is twenty eight units on East Cotati, just slightly east of downtown. And it is currently under a HUD contract for affordable housing, and there's ten years remaining on that. So the council could look at this as a forty year extension, should they choose to grant approval of the funding request. I'll go to the next slide. Burbank has acquired the property, so it came up for sale. Burbank identified it as something they're interested in. While they're in negotiations, they reached out to the city to discuss this possibility because they did identify some deferred maintenance. And they also like to keep their properties in good shape, as I'm sure the council's noticed, as they've seen Burbank properties throughout the county. And so they're looking for future renovation and also upgrading some of the units to meet ADA requirements and those types of things. And so they're looking for a nest egg to be able to fund that into the future. Again, we would get a new affordability agreement for a fifty year term for, and it would guarantee the restrictions would be for low and very low income units or residents. And it's worth noting, some of the residents there now actually receive checks. So this, these apartments are supporting some of our very lowest income individuals. So they, what I mean by receiving checks is they actually, because of their costs and their incomes, they actually are subsidized rather than paying any rent at all. And so it's worth noting that. The funding, the use of these funds for this proposed purpose is identified as an allowable use in the zoning code. And we have what's called preservation policies in the housing element. So while we don't get any RENA credits for this, our housing element does talk about preservation of housing units. And as we report annually to the state on what we do in affordable housing, preservation is one of the metrics that we are measured by with our annual production reports that we send to the state every year, and we present to the council typically in March. And then just it's worth noting that the remaining affordable housing balance would be approximately two point one million dollars, should the council choose to support this request. We've talked about the need to have kind of a war chest or a nest egg, depending on how you want to think about it, going into the next RENA cycle. And so it's worth pointing out that we would have that amount available liquid. And then there is a loan to the, I believe, the sewer fund that could be the water fund that's repaid annually. So that fund will continue to grow separate from contributions from private development projects. With that, it is recommended by the Department of Community Development that the council approve a request from Burbank Housing for two hundred fifty thousand dollars for the Wynwood apartment projects. And if the council supports this, staff will bring back a affordable housing agreement for approval that will identify all the specifics similar to the form that council's seen in the past. And available or free questions? And Burbank Housing has sent Mr. Rich Wallach here as well. I'm not sure if Rich has any words he'd like to give, but he's definitely here to answer any questions. And here's Mr. Wallach.
Thank you, Noah, and good evening, staff and council members. Just one small clarification, Noah. We have not closed yet on the property. We did go hard on our due diligence just recently and are moving forward. But we have to, in order to secure the HUD loan transfer, it's a long process, so it's going to take a couple of months for that to be completed. I'm happy to answer questions. We're really excited about this development. You know, in the days of not being able to do four percent tax credits, you know, we're trying to be more creative about assets that we can purchase. And if anything, as you said, preserve affordable housing rather than necessarily create new. We do a number of new developments. But we, when we saw this, we found this as a very attractive opportunity. Burbank has Charles Street Village just around the corner and Tower Apartments and other properties in Cotati and around Cotati. So we feel we're the right people to manage this property well into hopefully another fifty years of, but also probably in, say, six to eight years, we'd go back and do a tax credit application for this project. And available for any questions?
Thank you, Noah. Thank you, Mr. Wallach. At this point, I will go ahead and open it up to council. It looks like council member Ford.
Thanks. I'm very excited to see Burbank taking on this, this project. My only question is, given that affordable housing is Burbank's raison d'etre, why a limited term affordability covenant anyway? Like, we have recent experience with other mechanisms which provide in perpetuity affordability agreements. And I, and I just wonder why fifty, why not in perpetuity?
I don't know, I, who, how we decided on fifty, but we generally don't do perpetuity. You know, that, that does, you know, creates a certain amount of constraints. But fifty-five years, if, if and when we do go in for tax credits, they usually put a new fifty-five year agreement on a project. So it's encouraging, you know, renovations and upgrades, so the project can live for a long time. It could be at some point it meets the end of its useful life. So I think that's kind of the thinking behind not having it be forever, which would then go with the land supposedly.
Great. Thanks. That's helpful.
Sure.
Vice Mayor Lemon.
Well, say, Mr. House, you read my mind. I'm disappointed to hear that there's no RENA credit towards this sort of action because this is maintaining housing where it's most needed and in the most difficult level to maintain. So I'm surprised at that. But that editorial comment aside, I wanted to ask, we mentioned because of the difficulty in obtaining bought allocations right now, the regular practice for Burbank of moving in and doing renovations when they take a property over, it's going to have to be set back six to eight years. I recognize that difficulty. I was curious, is, will the residents see anything upfront in terms of at least mild refurbishing or cleanup or small improvements, seeing as they just saw a rent increase?
So I need to clarify the thing about the rent increase because people keep thinking that that's a rent increase to the tenants, but it isn't. It's a rent increase for the property, but the tenants don't see any of that increase in value. That, that is just to help, you know, the, the health of the property, so it has cash flow. It was, you know, from our standpoint, it meant we had to pay more for the property, but we, we wouldn't pay that much if they didn't get the rent increase. So, so yeah, that's just to be clear, these are project-based vouchers. They're, they're a subsidy that, you know, as Noah said, some people don't pay anything in rent, others pay a few hundred dollars, and others pay close to the two thousand dollars or so that the, the rent would be per unit.
I'm thinking I wouldn't be, want to be the neighbor that's paying two thousand to find out the person next to, the same unit is actually being paid to live there. But that aside, that, that clarifies us a bit, but the question remains, I'm curious if Burbank has any plans to do anything to...
Yes, yes, we do. And frankly, your money will help in that venture. So
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, there are three units that are single level ADA units. And we have found that they are not up to, to standards and need to be upgraded. So there will be an effort to do that for those units, as well as other things on site that are not specific to the ADA units, but are, make the entire site fully accessible.
So beyond ADA accessibility, nothing in terms of general refurbishment or improvements?
Some general refurbishments. There's exhaust fans that need to be replaced in the bathrooms. We've got a, you know, a list of items that were identified. But we don't want to go too far, so we are gonna make improvements and keep it up to snuff. There will also be, you know, as units turn over time, upgrades to kitchens and baths, but we don't want to...
So there'll be catch-up right away, and then the usual when the units turn over catching up?
Yes.
Right, okay.
Right.
That's helpful. Thanks for that answer.
Sure.
Thank you. I don't see another hands up by the council. Mr. Wallach, I did have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Well, a comment, I should say. I've seen some of the Burbank housing that you've done previously, and I think that they've done a tremendous job in keeping those up and making them look very nice. Especially like the Burbank housing we have on Marshway in Cotati. And frankly, I didn't even realize that the Wynwood was actually a lower income complex. So that's, that's a good testament of that.
It doesn't look like it. It's...
No, and having walked through their campaigning, it was very well maintained. What's the purchase price of that, or is that something that's still in negotiations?
No, that's, that's pretty well said. It was eight point four million dollars. We actually got a credit. So it's gonna be just under eight point three million dollars, when all's said and done. Just under three hundred thousand per unit, which when you look at it, given that it's in good condition, the cost to build new housing these days, affordable housing, is creeping up over seven hundred per unit. Also, these are all two-room units, so it's great for families, you know, it's not... So, so when you look at a, there's, you're getting a lot of bedrooms for that.
I don't have any other further questions at the moment, so I will open this up for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. Looking to our attendees tonight, please use your raise hand icon or dial star nine if you'd like to make a public comment. Mayor Moore, that will end public comment.
Thank you very much. I'll bring it back to the council. Councilmember Harvey?
Yes, I am very happy to see that Burbank Casting is taking over this. It's in generally pretty good shape. I was hoping that they would buy the units next door, which need a little bit more help. But yeah, the Burbank Housing Group has done wonders all over. And so I'm glad to see that you are taking this. And I'm really looking forward to us helping, however small that we can help, to make sure that those units get maintained and stretch their longevity
Absolutely.
as long as we can. I know every little bit helps. And as you pointed out in your list, sometimes it's just a lot of little things. But when you have, what was it, twenty-eight units, those little things add up quite quickly, so...
Just one thing that we are gonna take a close look at, because this is an all-electric building, is we're gonna be taking a good look at solar. So that would be something that we would not wait to do.
Great. Well, thank you.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor Lemon, before I let you go, I did have another quick question that came back to me. Mr. House had indicated that this was a fifty, fifty-year program. And the fifty-year would subsume the ten, so it's really a forty-year program?
Well, I think he's saying that, well, first of all, after ten years, we will go back to HUD and hopefully get another twenty years of a HAP contract. They're usually renewed every twenty years. One of the things that was happening here is that we were competing against a for-profit developer who, you know, he saw that he could operate this this way, but probably at the end of ten years, when that's over, he could let that lapse and then convert these to, to market rate. So that, that's something that we're looking at here is the preservation of those affordable units through the HAP contract. Just, just restricting the, the incomes without something like a HAP contract or tax credits would be detrimental because there wouldn't be sufficient cash flow. So we're working together on this.
Thank you.
Sure.
And then, Noah, when you were, when I was looking at the packet and you were talking about the program, one through seven preservation of the affordable, the first sentence there was monitor the status of publicly assisted projects that may become at risk of loss as affordable housing through personal contact by city staff with property owners at least annually. Do we have that mechanism in place now? I know we did not in the past.
As we've talked about, the city does not have a robust housing program. My department is responsible for that, and we are working to expand it. But we do not have a robust program whereby we really have the ability to keep a good finger on that pulse.
Okay, so with the purchase of Burbank, that would certainly help on this one.
Absolutely.
Terrific. Vice Mayor Lemon?
No more questions. I thought if there was more discussion, I would be happy to move. That we moved to twenty-five thousand in affordable housing funds to support the renovation of the twenty-eight unit Wynwood apartment complex by Burbank Housing. Preserve those units as affordable housing.
What would happen to the other two hundred and fifty thousand?
What was, what was the dollar amount?
Two hundred and fifty thousand, and I would second that.
That's it?
Vice Mayor, would that work for you?
I'm sorry, what did I say? I was reading...
Twenty-five thousand.
Five thousand.
And you caught me. I was going to pocket that. Hello.
Nice try.
My retirement. No, thank you. No, I, I was looking at, I just read it wrong. Thank you. Yes.
Okay. We're okay with not rereading that, Mr. Parker? Or should we reread that?
Oh, please don't make me. I'll mess it up again at this time of night.
It's fine. I think that the motion was corrected on the record.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second.
And, Mayor, before, did, did we get public comment on this one yet? I don't, oh, we did. Okay.
We did. Yeah, thank you. Now you're starting to make me question myself. So we have a motion and a second. Ms. Burgess, would you kindly, kindly give us a roll call?
Councilmember Harvey?
Absolutely, yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lindman?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
And I would emphasize enthusiastically, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wallach, and best of luck with that.
Thank you. Bye.
So now we will move on to our amended agenda and discuss the redistricting. And Mr. Obit, I believe you're gonna take the reins on this one?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is, this is our bonus item for tonight.
It's always, it's always fun to readdress something we've already addressed.
So I, I'll just really lightly touch on some history, but we already talked about this last time. Redistricting, so the census every ten years drives redistricting. The Board of Supervisors created, was called the Advisory Redistricting Commission, or otherwise known as the ARC. And the long and short of it is that they mostly weren't able to do much because the census data didn't come in until late. They got usable maps in October, and so now it's like a mad rush to the December fifteenth statutory deadline to actually draw the districts and have them approved. On the twenty-sixth, this council discussed redistricting, and the council expressed comfort with remaining in District Two, which is Rabbit, Rabbit District. That same evening, the city of Runner Park also discussed redistricting. They had a slightly different take on it. They wanted the city to be in one district only. And furthermore, they requested that they be in District Three. And so the rationale of Runner Park Council was that District Three... And so, um, uh, the rationale of Runner Park Council, um, was that District Three is, uh, roughly, you know, includes South Santa Rosa, it's along the one-on-one corridor. The interests of the residents of District Three are similar enough to what Runner Park's interests are, that that would be a good district to be part of. And, uh, in the packet that was sent, uh, or the item that was sent, Runner Park's letters in there basically just says that. We want to be in one district and we want to be part of District Three. Um, the ARC had a, I think their last meeting in October, but then they brought the, they brought their maps. Um, they had a couple alternative maps, but they were recommending one map in particular at the November second meeting of the Board of Supervisors, and, um, it's referred to as Map D. It's in, um, it's one of the attachments to the packet. Uh, it has their presentation from the November second Board of Supervisors meeting. And in that, um, basically, wh- what, what, what happened was, um, uh, they were, the ARC was, uh, trying to meet some, um, equity goals, um, in redistricting. And, um, the effect of that mostly, even though there's different regions of the county that have different, um, uh, depressed, you know, economic areas like Sonoma Valley or out in Gurnville, it is, you know, there's a variety of locations, but the one that was the focus was, um, southeast Santa Rosa. Um, so in the current district, that is, um, part of District Five, which is Hopkins District. And the proposed map by the ARC showed, um, essentially, uh, a new District Three that encompassed downtown Santa Rosa and southeast Santa Rosa, so Roseland and, um, Morland, so those two areas. Um, with, I think, the, the general, the, the general, uh, uh, thought that that was a community of interest, um, that area, downtown Santa Rosa and that southeast Santa Rosa. So, so they basically drew that as District Three. Um, District Three formally, or currently is up and down the corridor. It goes a little farther north and south. Um, but anyway, redrawn to include that core of Santa Rosa in southeast. Um, when they did that, it creates sort of a cascade of other things that they have to solve. And primarily, generally speaking, to each of the five districts, Sonoma County has a population of roughly five hundred thousand. There's five districts, which means that each supervisory district has to have roughly a hundred thousand, um, in population. So they redraw District Three to meet their equity goals, and then that, and sort of the cascade of sort of issues that creates is trying to find the population to rebalance the districts. And take into account Runner Park's request to be in a single supervisory district. So, um, Map D, the D, the, the map that they recommended to the supervisors for consideration on November second, basically, um, pushed, uh, Hopkins District, this District Five, out of West Santa Rosa and redrew it to grab all of Runner Park, essentially replacing that population, moving, you know, moving the West, uh, Santa Rosa population and replacing it with the Runner Park population. Um, Catati was unaffected in the ARC's map. Um, in the presentation that the ARC gave, they did say that, um, they're trying to respect Runner Park's desire to be in one supervisory district, and, um, the ARC said something in the slide that's in the packet, said something to the effect of, um, you know, it'd be nicer if Runner, or if Catati was in that, in the same district as Runner Park Two, but it's not essential. Um, but it wasn't really a major point of conversation at the supervisor meeting on November second by the ARC in, in the presentation. Um, there were some random public comments about, yeah, we should have Runner Park and Catati together, but, um, again, it wasn't really a focus of the presentation on November second. Um, uh, if you look at the, um, if you look at that PowerPoint, uh, deck from November second, there's also some tables in there that show the populations, or the revised population totals for each district. Um, when you look at them, they roughly, they vary between essentially like ninety-seven thousand and ninety-nine thousand per district. Um, with the exception of District Five, which is Hopkins District. And, uh, that had night, a population of ninety-two thousand. And so that became a, that, that became a topic of conversation among supervisors. Uh, well, Supervisor Hopkins specifically, um, was concerned that her district was basically eight thousand short of the other districts in the revised maps. And sort of a related, a related issue was that by pushing District Two, which is Rabbit's District, out of East Runner Park, to, in other words, for Hopkins to grab, for her district to be the entire entirety of Runner Park, it pushes Rabbit's current district out of East Runner Park. But, um, the redrawn map then draws Rabbit's District up to and including Bennett, the Bennett Valley area of Santa Rosa to make up for that population loss, to rebalance the population. So, um, in the staff report, I, I list four bullets that are just worth just considering, um, because at the end of the meeting on November second, basically, the, um, ARC is gonna be looking at very, a variety of comments from the supervisors, but this is, uh, the ones I think that are more directly relevant to Catati. Um, the first, the feasibility of combining Catati and Runner Park in District Five, this was, um, this was a Hopkins comment. Um, like I mentioned, she was eight thousand short in her district, and she was suggesting that maybe, um, Catati, uh, could join District Five, I think with Runner Park. I think that was the suggestion. So that would be, um, something that the ARC would be looking at, and then coming back on the fifteenth of November to present smutted maps. Um, revisit East Catati corridor line proposed in this Map D. This came from, uh, Supervisor Rabbit, and it very, it, his comment wasn't, um, it wasn't clear what exactly he was hoping to accomplish there, other than, um, the Map D showed the Catati city limit, which is jagged, as we all know, as you go down East Catati. And I think he was suggesting that maybe somehow they get smoothed out in the district lines. And then, uh, Bennett Valley, um, so Supervisor Goran, um, believed that Bennett Valley was a community of interest with Sonoma Valley. In other words, um, probably shouldn't be attached to Rabbit's District in the revised maps. Um, so, you know, i- if, if the supervisors were to agree, you know, if they, if they were ultimately to say that Bennett Valley should be part of, um, the Sonoma Valley District, then that pushes, um, District Two out of that area, which means that District Two then needs to grab population from somewhere else, um, to, to balance the districts. So, um, that's how it could affect Catati. And then, um, uh, this last one, and this last bullet, this, these, by the way, these are all from the staff report, the county staff report for the, on November sixteenth agenda, even though the, um, the maps haven't been attached at this point. Um, propose a map that includes Runner Park in District Three. And so that was a topic of conversation. Can't you just, at, at the supervisors' meeting, can't you just put Runner Park in with, uh, southeast Santa Rosa and call it District Three and call it a day? Um, and, uh, the demographer that was there basically said there'd be too much population in that area, so you can't really combine southeast Santa Rosa with Runner Park, because it would, it would exceed the population and unbalance it. So I, I don't know what this map will show, but, um, anyway, they're gonna, I guess, attempt to do that. Uh, some, some, uh, some version of District Three that includes Runner Park. But, um, at the end of the day, I don't know, I don't know that that's gonna be, uh, uh, y- you know, a significant, a significant proposal, because, um, there seemed to be a lot of desire to, um, to probably not change District Three significantly from what the ARC had proposed, due to the equity and other goals that they're trying to achieve there. Um, I think at the end of the day, it's gonna, it's, you know, it probably would come down to, um, you know, does District Five end up including Catati to try to, um, add more population to Hopkins District? Um, and does the, uh, does Goran's District include Bennett Valley? Both of the, e- either one of those actions would reduce the population in District Two, which is Rabbit's District, which is basically means that then District Two would have to be rebalanced somewhere else by grabbing population. So, as you can see, it's when you pull on the thread, it has a cascade of effects. But, uh, a- anyways, to conclude and just open this up for, um, a conversation, at our last meeting, um, I think we were comfortable with staying, the council expressed that they're comfortable staying in District Two, and, um, given that the Board of Supervisors will be meeting again on the sixteenth with various map proposals, I think it's, um, the reason why this is on the agenda tonight, as a late add, is that it's probably, um, prudent for us to put our, you know, our interests into the mix, um, so that, uh, at least were heard, you know, as they start thinking about some revised maps on the sixteenth. And, um, and if, uh, the council, if they still think, uh, that we should be part of District Two, then, you know, um, or whatever the direction is from tonight, um, uh, we would put it in a, um, it'd take that direction and put it in the letter from the mayor to the Board of Supervisors. Um, and with that, I will stop talking, but be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Damian. I will bring this back to council for questions.
Mr. Mayor, no questions, but I bet we're ready to go to discussion after public comment.
Uh, okay, so everybody's clear as mud on that, what could happen there?
I just have one question. Um, Damian, how did you, I, I went and looked at everything that was posted publicly, and there was no mention of Catati getting joined. So when did, when did you find out? I mean, I know you found out today, but how did you find out that we were on the discussion of getting switched into District Five?
Uh, I found out, you know, I basically, uh, a couple council members got wind of it somehow through connections with supervisors, and, um, then I looked into it and looked at the future packet and saw that that was one of the things discussed, and then basically had to follow back through all the meetings to see how this even came up, because we were not, I mean, there, there was no official notification of it.
Would have been nice to get some official notice, but anyway.
I did listen to that part of the supervisors' meeting up until, um, Supervisor Goran was speaking in reference to District One, I guess that is. And then I had to move off to another meeting, but, um, yeah, it, it hadn't come up at that point yet. Okay, um, I will open this up for public comment at this point, if we don't have any further clarifying questions. Oh, Vice Mayor Lemon?
Not a question. Was just waiting for after public comment.
I see. Okay, thank you. Ms. Burgess?
Looking to our attendees, please use your raise hand icon or dial star nine if you'd like to make a public comment. Mayor Moore, that will end public comment.
Thank you. Back to you, Vice Mayor Lemon.
Well, I certainly don't see it as our place to try and control redistricting. Obviously, nobody really can and shouldn't. Uh, people can make noise. We've seen that happen, but that's a process that should go as it goes. Um, but I do think there's one particularly troublesome thing that kind of arose out of this that I think we should take mention of and reply back to. In my understanding, there was a, a kind of a process forum suggesting that Catati and Runner Park were inseparable and shared too many interests and had to be essentially bound. I think sister city was the term I heard. Um, that raises some concerns. Um, I'd like to take a minute just to go into them. Uh, I think most of you know this, but it's worth going. It's disappointing that our representative from Catati on the ARC unfortunately lives outside city limits and is evidently unaware of much of this, but we're communities actually, although we have a few interests. We do share a school board, although it's taken care of by a separate board, and it takes care of itself. We do now work together on our safe team. Uh, but, uh, in our libraries, essentially Runner Park's library, that works fine, and I'm appreciative that our name's on it too. But we're not really communities of shared interests. We like each other, we respect each other, we can work together well, but we are completely different. And I will point out the most clear thing is that our one city describes itself as being urban, Runner Park, and recognized in its communities of interest as Santa Rosa and the one-on-one corridor. Catati's always thought of itself as a smaller city, respects its agricultural heritage and its more rural heritage. And more importantly with that, Catati was actually formed to protect this community from Runner Park's growth. That is why this city was incorporated. Uh, so, so with that, we have some natural tensions that make us different, and certainly not something that I would want in the public, the assumption coming forward that we have to be maintained together to be able to function. Particularly, my colleagues, many of whom will remember the last decade, we had one Runner Park council member who spent years publicly suggesting how we should be quote-unquote merged, which really means Runner Park should swallow up Catati. And with a degree of seriousness, uh, despite us pointing out very clearly the difference value of land use, and that's probably the key thing. I ask all of you to think of your friends and neighbors in Catati, whatever segment of the population they're from, whatever their political values might be. One thing they'll agree on is land use value in Catati is different than it is in Runner Park, and most of them appreciate that deeply. So certainly losing that by being pushed in with Runner Park would be problematic for us. I will also point out that right now, we have an advantage that I shared with one, with the mayor in Runner Park some weeks ago. We currently have two supervisors. If there's ever something of interest that affects something we both care about, whether it's the safe team, perhaps our schools, even though the county has limited impact. We have two supervisors who we can call, who will be interested in hearing our thoughts. If we're put in the same district as Runner Park, we lose that. We'll essentially be an adjunct to them, and if Runner Park wants one direction, knowing that they have different interests than us, which is fair, our voices will be much smaller. That certainly works to our detriment, I think, there. So I guess I just want to end by saying it's clear to me that the best way to serve our public is by us being in a separate district from Runner Park. It advantages Runner Park and us in terms of doubling our supervisory representation. It also protects the differences between us. Because we unfortunately can't get physical distance from Runner Park, unlike most cities, we don't have a green space between us because of their growth. But if we can get some, not literal space, but some figurative space by not being lumped together and not being in the same district, that helps ameliorate that to some degree. So I would suggest, just a very polite letter pointing out a great respect and admiration for working with our colleagues, uh, both staff and electives in the community of Runner Park, but that we are separate and different communities, and we feel that our community is best advantaged for many of the reasons I've shared by being remaining in a separate district. Now, is that District Supervisor Hopkins? Is that District Supervisor Rabbit's? I don't know where this winds up, and I'm not gonna try and push that personally. I think highly of both of them, and I think we'd be well represented by both of them. I think Catati matches well with Pen Grove and Petaluma. I think we also match well with, uh, Sebastopol in that region. But I do think we don't want to lose the advantage of being separated at least from Runner Park from my perspective in different supervisory districts, and that's what I wanted to share. So I hope in our response, we could politely, but clearly and firmly make that point, because I know many of our, all of our public will feel very strongly about that. I did receive a call from one call, a person in the public who was concerned about this already, had heard about this and suggested what Drew Draper would say about this. This person's description was her head would be spinning, and I'll hate to picture it. I think they were right. So I'm glad this is on for us tonight, and I do hope we can send a polite but firm letter pointing out being merged with Runner Park is inappropriate, uh, and that we would prefer to remain separate for a lot of very clear reasons.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford?
Thanks. Um, yeah, that's an interesting point of view that Vice Mayor Lemon, um, brings out. I'm not, I'm not as, um, convinced as him that it's important to remain in a separate supervisor, supervisory district. Where I thought this conversation was gonna go was, was the direction Runner Park's opposition to be in, to being in District Five, which is we're on the one-on-one corridor, we're not part of the coastal, you know, the West County, and, um, And, and like Vice Mayor Lemon, I agree that our interests are not that different from Sebastopol and, I mean, pretty different from coastal communities, I guess. But, so I, I could support Vice Mayor Lemon's position that, that our primary, uh, the primary thing we push in the letter is that we remain in a separate district than Ronard Park. I'm, I'm, it's an interesting take coming out of our discussion last time where, where that didn't come out quite as strongly. And, but I, but I do agree, we have very different cultures and it is a disservice for people to treat us as one, one city, which, which might be exacerbated by being in the same supervisor district.
Very quickly, Councilmember Ford, if I could add to that. I agree that might, might have came off as my main point since I belabored it incredibly strongly that we shouldn't be merged, uh, put together one district, but probably the primary thing is I would say like Ronard Park too, we certainly wouldn't want to be split in any reason either. And there may not be, but that's a given. And I, I will say just for the record too, I'm completely sympathetic to Ronard Park's concerns. And I think they should remain not split. And, and ideally, I, I, I do take great support for their concerns with this potential redistricting. I'm just hoping that we're, how do I put it, I don't want to be involved in a shotgun wedding to Ronard Park as a result of it, so.
Councilmember Harvey?
Thank you, Mayor Moore. Yes, I agree with my colleagues. I think that Katari has fought long and hard to have their own identity. You know, as was pointed out, when we became a city because we didn't want to be part of Ronard Park. And while we do, do a lot of things with Ronard Park, we also do a lot of things with the other areas. Look at our, our fire district, you know, we, we are in much of the area of Pen Grove and, and some of the sections surrounding Petaluma. And we certainly are able to work with our other cities around us. But it, it's a little unsettling to think that we are that joined together. And as was pointed out, it, it's, it's not our fault that Ronard Park built right up to our city lines, it just happened that way. And as was discussed earlier, that's kind of why our boundary looks a little jagged in places. And that's because they built right up to us. But, you know, Katari wants to have its small town character. And that is what I have heard over the years from many, many constituents. And yes, I did receive a call today, a couple of calls today about this because people were concerned that we were just part of Ronard Park. Which, you know, people don't want to be considered as such. So I think that I concur with, with my colleague. We, we need to be considered our own identity and be that whatever district we get put in. We are our own identity and not part of Ronard Park.
Thank you. I don't see another hands up. Councilmember Sparks, are you sure you don't want to weigh in on this?
I feel like I've talked too much this meeting already, but I, I, I am, I, I, I agree that it is, it is probably in our best interest to stay separate from Ronard Park. Although I did have a constituent ask me whether was Katari part of Ronard Park, a person who lives on my street. They, they thought that Katari was just a neighborhood and that we were actually part of Ronard Park, so.
That's a problem.
Yeah. But I, I'm not quite as strongly against joining with Ronard Park as, as others are. I feel like our interests are getting closer presently than they were in the past. But I do feel uncomfortable, I don't think we have much in common with Sea Ranch and just the fact of joining this district that goes so far northwest. And we would be the farthest, southmost little peninsula of a very weirdly shaped district. So I, I do not, I was very surprised that they were going to put us into District Five, which I don't really think is a good idea.
Thank you. The Katari Museum had a reception last week and it's too bad some of our, our constituents don't go down there and check out that museum and get an understanding of how Katari established and, and and then the evolution of Ronard Park around Katari. I do think that we are collaborative on many issues that we have shared interests. I think we are culturally diverse or culturally opposed. We don't have a casino, we don't have a Walmart. There's a reason why we don't have those things because we just don't think that that is what Katari is. And if you look back at the history of that, it's evident. We have one big box and thank God we have that. I think that the region historically has been, as we talked about last time, you know, it was Petaluma, Pen Grove, Katari, and that was that southern county kind of region. The, I think the primary concern, and, and maybe this was something that I picked up that was inferred and implied by Ronard Park versus actually stated, but I think their concern was that they felt that they didn't want to be part of two districts. And that they were not necessarily getting the representation from, from one of the district supervisors. And to me, if I were to approach that subject, I would say that, you know, it's better to have two supervisors on there because then you would have a stronger voice in things happening countywide as, as they affected you. So with that, worst case scenario, if the county or the commission decided that they needed to move us, I would much rather be affiliated with District Five if need be. But, but other than that, I'd rather just stay in District Two because I think it's, as Councilmember Ford referenced last meeting, it's much more culturally akin to what we were originally and a little bit more rural and less urban. So with that, I think we need to determine what type of direction we would send to the county that we stay in two, or worst case scenario, we go to five without another, without Ronard Park in that. And, and no offense to Ronard Park, but maybe that's something that we look at. Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, I'm going to propose we send a letter where first priority is, don't split the city. The second priority is, is not a district that's mostly urban. So I, I wouldn't phrase it as we think we need to be in a separate district in Ronard Park. I would phrase it as we view ourselves as a, you know, Vice Mayor Lemon put it better than I will be able to, but you know, a community that recognizes its agricultural past and views itself as a small city and, and thus try to, try to emphasize that cultural difference from Ronard Park. So I would say emphasize top priority is not be split. I don't think that's going to be an issue, but it's good to point it out. And then secondly, somehow phrase the, the culture difference between us and Ronard Park.
Thank you. Just for clarification, and, and I didn't check, see it on the maps or anything and maybe it was my version of that. But Damian, today, they didn't have a decision of splitting Katari into two separate districts. Okay.
No, that didn't come up. It was, the only thing kind of that smelled like that a little bit maybe would be revisit this Katari corridor line and what that means exactly. I don't, I don't know. I don't think Rabbit knew either. It's really the demographers that are going to be playing with boundaries to see.
Okay, okay, thanks, man.
Damian, is it possible that that meant that, you know, because we're, we, we have the one-on-one down the middle of us, that west of Highway one-on-one would go one way for us and east would go another way? Is that possibly what that meant?
No, the East Katari thing was really just about the, he was talking about sort of the extensions for the peninsula of East Katari and how it is jagged and weird looking.
Okay.
That's what he was referring to, in my comment.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Lemon?
Yeah, good discussion. I don't know if there's a scenario where we could wind up in District Five without Ronard Park. I think the move of Ronard Park to District Five is necessary to support Roseland being annexed closer to the city core of Santa Rosa. If they could have done it with us, they might have gone for us anyhow, but our seven and a half K doesn't match what is Ronard Park sitting at forty K plus or something? I, I forget often, significantly greater population, obviously. So that's not really a possibility. The question is if we did pull, pulled into it, I suppose. I certainly agree. I think it makes sense to mention don't split because if you're going to send a letter expressing your concerns, you better say that. Because if you don't say it, well, you're kind of opening the door. Secondly, I'm open to moderating the language as Councilmember Ford suggested. I, I don't have to stomp and grit my teeth and yell, no, we don't want to go anywhere near Ronard Park because I really don't feel that negatively toward it. But I do think there would be some benefit of at least somehow gently expressing, delineating the differences. I think Ben and I both agree on that. That's clear, but with that, expressing the preference, the value, the benefit we've had of being separate without getting into a big push about it, but I do think there's some benefits in terms of having two separate supervisors and also keeping some distance from Ronard Park, and we don't have to put this in another, but let's face it. So we don't open the door to the argument in the future of them swallowing our city up. It may be overreaction, but that's something, when I watched that for a decade and I kept hearing it, I knew it wasn't kidding, it was serious. And I don't want to open that door at all. So I'm open to discussion if anybody has suggestions how we can word that in a way that just makes that point that we benefit for being separate and that's a preference without belaboring it unnecessarily. I'm certainly open to that, but if we can find a way, I'd like to include part of that, because I do think it's beneficial to us.
So would we, would we go back to the county and say, look, we liked the original drafting of the Arc, let's just keep it there?
Well, I wouldn't suggest, this is why I didn't, I saw our eyes all glaze over when City Manager was explaining the process of trying to figure out redistricting. I'm not going to try and get into figuring that out for them. I'm just going to express something that their Arc did fail to understand, who and what Katari is as a community, what our values are and what our core similarities with other communities are. To suggest that we should need to be ideally paired with Ronard Park misses an understanding of both communities, I think, which is troubling to me. So I do think we should point out there's a distortion in the judgment there and that our preference would be that we understand the challenges they face and we're open to that. But our wishes are not to be split and to maintain some separation with Ronard Park if possible. And ideally, probably if, since Ronard Park seems likely to go to District Five, for us to remain in District Two, that's probably the best way to do it, although frankly, I'd be happy, like many of you, being in either district. We have similarities with both of them and they're both good supervisors.
Okay, so if I understand the direction that we're getting for the majority that we would like to remain in District Two and need be not necessarily lumped in with whatever district Ronard Park ends up in?
Yeah, with some delineation has been, I think, I like the way you've put it, delineating the differences between us. So they have some clarity on that, that we're not communities, communities of shared interests. Because that's a misperception that should be corrected.
Ben?
And there's nothing negative about that, it's just factual.
Right, right. And I think that, that responding to the Arc Chair's comment that in, in an ideal world would be in the same supervisor district, that's an opening to say, actually, no, that's not right. And here are some reasons why. So that might be the way to get it into the letter, like without saying we don't like Ronard Park, just saying.
No, we don't want to be Ronard Park, yeah.
Exactly.
Councilmember Harvey?
I, I would agree.
I like the way that Ben originally had, had stated it and that's, you know, the urban-ness of Ronard Park versus the ruralness or agricultural nature of Katari. It, it kind of differentiates our values a little bit differently. I like those terms.
Well, that term, the first part of it actually came from Ronard Park's letter.
I know, yeah.
Where they describe themselves. So that is the perfect, another, there's another entry point too that makes it easy for us to gently make this point.
Yeah.
Okay, so it appears we're okay with that on a consensus basis. Laura, can you live with that?
Yeah, absolutely. And I would, I would, I would make one more suggestion, which is that when you talk about the urban versus rural values, that you might delineate a few of those really specifically because a, a lot of folks use the term urban as a stand-in for race. And I want to make it extremely clear that we are not suggesting anything along those lines whatsoever.
Agreed.
Agreed. Mr. Robid, did that give you enough direction? And we'll, we'll get together and compose a letter on that.
Yeah, yep, good, thank you.
Thank you so much, council. Now we will move on to City Manager's report.
All right, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, okay, Holiday Toy Drive. The Katari, Ronard Park Katari Rotary, gift Katari and Ranch Adobe Fire District's annual toy drive is beginning November twenty-ninth. And they're accepting unwrapped, we are all accepting unwrapped toys, bicycles and gift cards that can be donated at the Katari Police Department, Katari City Hall, or Ranch Adobe, Ranch Adobe's Firehouse in Katari or Pen Grove. Toys will be delivered in police, police cars and fire trucks on December eighteenth. So look for that, it's coming up soon at the end of the month. We also have a Katari, or no, sorry, Coffee with a Cop on Monday, November twenty-second at eight AM at Starbucks on East Katari Avenue. So come on down and join us if you'd like to have some coffee with our cops. We did earn a, another GFOA award, Transcendence Award for our annual audit. So great job again to Angela and her team. This is, uh, this is the second straight award that we've gotten for our, what was the artist formerly known as Caffer? It's Act Fur now or something like that, ACFR. The, we've also, at this point now, because of all the hard work and admin services, been awarded three awards for our financial summary document and three awards for our annual budget documents. Doing really well there. And just found out some recreation stuff. So just reminder again, Camp Katari Thanksgiving break is open for, registrations open and that's a Monday through Wednesday camp, the week of Thanksgiving, when children have the time off of school, but their parents are probably still working in the first half of that week. Camp is eight AM to five PM each day and they're held at the Community Center, space is limited. So sign up early to reserve your child's spot. Also during Thanksgiving break, we're offering through one of our instructors, a youth soccer clinic for children ages five to eight at Sunflower Park on Monday, Wednesday, Monday through Wednesday, nine AM to twelve thirty PM. Zumba classes have started up again Monday nights in the Katari room from six PM to seven PM. And first class is free. This isn't Zumba Gold, I think this is like general adult Zumba, so if you, if anyone's into that, that's going on now. And also we're offering children's ballet and dance classes in partnership with Miss Sabrina's Dance Academy. And in January, we're also looking to offer music together, as parent and child music classes with Little Songbirds. So that's coming up. And then for the holidays, Friday, the third, we're going to be hosting our in-person holiday tree lighting event in the Plaza Park from four PM to eight PM. We do have a horse and carriage, food and craft vendors, cookies, coffee, hot chocolate crafts. and of course, a visit from Santa. And we're currently booking vendors for that event right now. And then lastly, the Downtown Shop and Stroll Event is also back this year, Saturday, December 4th. So that's the day after the tree lighting, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And downtown Katati on Overwood Highway, basically between East Katati and Page Street. So we'll have, as usual, have a collection of vendors out there. So if anyone needs any last-minute holiday gifts, that's a good, good place to check out. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. I don't see any hands up at the moment for Mr. Obed. I'm going to exit my full screen. There we go. I do, Councilmember Harvey. Thank you.
Damian, I thought Breakfast with Santa was going to happen again this year?
It is going to happen this year. And I apologize. I apologize. I didn't get the update, but I will, I'll add that. We are having a breakfast with Santa. It's going to be.
The 11th or something like that?
Yeah, I actually have the exact date. I don't have it.
Okay.
On my fingertips.
Okay.
I think it's, we're taking reservations now, so you can go on the city website and see. And it's a modified version. You know, it's not the drive-through, but it, it's like modified for COVID, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Obed. I don't see any further questions. So we will now move on to City Councilmember's reports. Councilmember Sparks?
Our ad hoc committee just reported we're in the process of setting up meetings with homeowners associations and church, church groups. So nothing further to report right now, but that's what we're working on, scheduling those meetings.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey?
Just really quickly, on November 1st was the WAC meeting. Everybody's happy that we're finally getting a little bit of water. It didn't help as much as we wished. We would need many more storms like that, but it did, it did help some, which is great. And the only other thing, there's a bunch of grants being applied for because there's more grants that are being made available. But we did get the 2021 EPA Water Sense Excellence Award again. And this is our fifth year. And our programs are so important that they are being utilized by many other agencies. So Snowwater is being contact, contacted for their Water Sense projects by many other agencies so that they can replicate them. So that's all for today.
That's terrific. Thank you. Councilmember Ford?
Related water issues, the Russian River Water Chatter Association Board Meeting was a few weeks ago. And I want to point out Katati contributed, the RRWA monthly produces an article on environmental issues that are published in small weekly newspapers, mostly around the county. And Katati contributed one of those. I assume that was Craig and his crew, but I'm not sure about that, on ways to contribute to creek cleanup. And so to keep our creeks clean, so that was great. Katati always does great in, the Russian River Water Chatter Association sponsors Sharps Collections and Med Collections. And maybe this isn't a good thing, Katati always does really well in those. We collect a lot. So most, most of the work until recently has been on drought response and, and helping municipalities deal, publicize water conservation measures and things like that. And, and so right now, the association is starting to develop next year's work plan and working with the cities to figure out which projects are going to be on the list. That's it.
And think of it as a good thing because we're keeping those things out of places where they don't belong.
Oh, absolutely. Oh, it's, it's absolutely good to collect. Yes. And, and no, I'm, we're always at the top of the list, collections.
Okay.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands up. I was at, recently at the Library Advisory Board. The Roanoke Park Katati Library has a new branch manager, which is good. And then today I was able to visit the new Bibliobus, which is a iteration of the old former Bookmobile. So that'll be coming to the tree lighting on the 3rd, so you'll be able to see that. And it's a fantastic little vehicle they have with the big screen on the side and the ability to have Wi-Fi so that if they go out to the West County or to some remote areas, they could actually allow people to access their Wi-Fi. So that's good until those things come up. SERA, the insurance program, is doing well. They've had some training programs for safety and contracted with some other providers for employee liability and things like that. So that's going well in that regard. That's about all I have to report out on those. So now we'll move on to public comment on non-action agenda items.
Looking to our attendees tonight, please use your raise hand icon or dial star nine if you'd like to make a public comment. Mayor Moore, that will end public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Burgess. Information received after the agenda was posted. We've already talked about that particular agenda item. Is that it, Mr. Obed, I believe?
There is nothing further.
Thank you so much. It is 10:23. We will adjourn this meeting. Thank you all very much for another successful meeting, and you guys have a great week.
Thank you all. Good night.
And happy Veterans Day to those veterans.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.